Good evening and welcome to the School Board Meeting of the Carson City School District. For the record, it's 7 o'clock. It's Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, and we're in the Assembly Room of the Carson City Community Center. The first order of business is the flag salute, so if you'll stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda item number two is adoption of the agenda submitted.
Sorry.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment? Okay, agenda item number three, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, distinguished guests. Late on the evening of November 9th, 2017, a tragic accident injured seven of our youth. I sat in stunned silence as I received the report of the accident from Sheriff Furlong, and I ached knowing that families in our community would soon be receiving news that no parent ever wants to hear. Lives of our students and families and our community would never be the same. Immediately after news of the accident, an amazing flurry of activity began. Word of the accident spread and people rolled up their sleeves and began doing. Candlelight vigil was planned and held where hundreds of people attended in an amazing demonstration of faith, love, and support. Fundraising efforts began immediately and support of all kinds began accumulating to help the students and their families. Our purpose this evening is twofold. The event on the evening of November 9th, 2017 will forever be part of our lives. The pain, the sadness, and the loss will always raise tender feelings as we recall a difficult time. However, our goal tonight is also intended to recognize those heroic efforts of our community members and neighbors who pulled together to support our students and their families during time of need. Joining us this evening are many of the individuals who made a tremendous difference on that night and in the time since. And I'd like to start by first recognizing some of the members of our local law enforcement, fire department, and medical corps, including those who were involved with the dispatch office, who were the first to respond to our students on the scene of the accident, who helped bring all of those emergency responses together. I'd like to give special thanks to Sheriff Furlong, Fire Chief Slaman, and their officers and staff who were on hand and first responded. If I could have these folks stand just to be recognized. Next, it's important to recognize key staff members at Carson High School who came together to support the students and their families. Special thanks go to Tasha Fuson and her administrative team, Angela Golick, Anne Britt, and the leadership class for organizing the candlelight vigil, and who began some of the fundraising efforts on that evening. Other staff playing an important role in providing comfort, emotional and spiritual support for the school community. I'd like to recognize Ty McMullin, and if these folks would stand if they're here, Rob Maugh, Brian Manukian, Matt Morgan, Frank Sacalarius, Erin Bean, and truly all of the staff at Carson High School and within our district who helped counsel students who donated gift cards, food, and cash to the families of our injured students. If we could recognize these folks, please. Much has to be said too for the students of Carson High School who assisted with fundraising activities, who attended many of these activities, and who demonstrated such an outpouring of support and care that their presence at the hospital was actually overwhelming. One classmate in particular immediately took action in a remarkable show of support and commitment. I'd like to invite Ms. Jasmine Reediger, who is an extraordinary young woman, to come forward and say a few words. Jasmine.
This is slightly taller than I expected. Okay, my name is Jasmine Reediger, and I managed and started the GoFundMe account for all seven of the students. And Stokes had asked me to kind of just discuss the fundraising efforts and what had been accomplished, so I would just like to specify that the bank originally had me write one main statement and then individually make each check. So, the main check ended up being fifty thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. So, that's fifty thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents that just the GoFundMe alone raised. So, each family then got seven thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. And that is due to the community, the GoFundMe, the students and teachers at Carson High School that really made sure that this would work and it happened in the way that it did. So, not only is the GoFundMe me, it was just a on-the-spot decision, but it was the community allowing for that to become successful. And so, I think that this is not just a me thing, this is an everyone thing, and it really shows that sometimes the worst things make the best things. And so, our community really did step up. Wiseman once said that "pain is inevitable, but suffering is optional," and I think we really use that. And although this was such a horrible accident, we came together and did what we could. You cannot medically help them, that's the doctors, but we financially help them. Thank you.
Jasmine. Richard? 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 Could you have Jasmine come back just for a minute?
Sure, Jasmine, if you'd just please join me again.
Hey Jasmine, you know, I know all the people here played a vital role, but you did something very special. And I think on behalf of the board, we'd just like to thank you. You make us very proud of where our students are. So, thank you very much for what you did.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, thanks also needs to go to several regional high schools and Carson City schools who all stood tall and demonstrated their support and their respect by organizing fundraising activities of their own and contributing those funds to our injured students. Special thanks goes to Douglas County High School, Dayton High School, and Bishop Minogue High School for their genuine concern and generous donations. Similarly, many of the schools in our own district reach out in a variety of ways to support our students and their families. In full support of this effort, community leaders, businesses, private citizens, religious leaders, and really the whole community, as Jasmine said, came together in a show of love and support. Businesses, including restaurants, held special events and donated the proceeds of those events to this effort. All of these extraordinary efforts were aimed at helping families to lighten the physical and emotional burdens felt. I've never been more proud of the character, compassion, and integrity of our students, staff, and the community than I've experienced due to these events. What a wonderful feeling to stand amidst a large crowd of neighbors, teachers, Little League coaches, board members, the mayor, and city officers, 4-H leaders, friends, members of governmental agencies, and caring citizens who came together in an amazing show of strength, encouragement, and faith. With precious donations being accumulated in large amounts to help ease the burden of mounting medical bills, other key individuals also came forth with advice, expertise, services, and donations of their own in support of the cause. I'd like to give special recognition to Lori Haney of City National Bank, Steve Neighbors of the Hop and May Adams Foundation, and if these folks are here, if they'd please stand, and Maya McKenzie of the Adams Hub and the Carson Cares Community Fund. Through these individuals and accounted through Carson High School, forty-four thousand three hundred and twelve dollars were raised and distributed to our families of our injured students. If we could please recognize these folks. In total, with monies collected through Carson High School and Jasmine's GoFundMe account, approximately nine thousand five hundred dollars was raised by this community to this end. Pretty amazing. Did I say that wrong? Oh, ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. Yeah, tremendous amount of money and work. With us this evening are some family members of our injured students, and representing the families tonight is Dr. Jennifer Ward DeJoseph, and I've asked her to say a few words as well.
Good evening, Superintendent Stokes, President Swirzick, members of the board, district office staff, and members of the public. My name is Jennifer Ward DeJoseph, and tonight I come to you on behalf of the parents who are represented out in our audience, many of which who have brought their children. We would like to acknowledge and publicly thank our first responders in law enforcement, fire, and paramedic units. I'm trying not to cry. Your first action and expertise that night, as well as your kindness and concern since that evening, has been very much appreciated by all of the families. The parents would like to thank the members of the high school staff who continuously support our families as we go through the healing process. The overwhelming support of the community, as you just heard, ninety-four thousand dollars that was raised, and through the public donations, through the fundraising event, have been nothing short of amazing. And we acknowledge the businesses as we still have prayers and funds needing to go out to yet another Carson High student who was injured in a horrific accident at the beginning of January, and we commend all community support that continues to go to help the children in need in our community. The parents of our seven children involved in the November accident want to acknowledge one particular student who you've already met, Jasmine, if you would please come up. As stated, Jasmine was able to start the pray for them early on November 10th, just a few hours after the accident. And through her leadership and selflessness, although she wants to spread that "I know how much work this undertaking was for a sixteen-year-old," and to do it all during her school, as well as to understand the emotional drain it was on her for her friends. So, we would like to honor Jasmine with a few tokens of our appreciation. And a little something for you for later. Thank you to the members of the board and to the Carson High community and to Jasmine for supporting our kids. We appreciate it. Thank you.
In closing, I would just like to offer my sincere gratitude to anyone, named or unnamed, who participated in any way in this tremendous show of love and support. I'm comforted to know that when the chips are down, or when one of us stands in need, our community is full of heroes that will rally around the cause to lift the hands that hang down and strengthen the feeble knees. During this tragic time, we've experienced sadness, pain, and loss, but we have rallied together. In response to an unthinkable tragedy, thousands of dollars and thousands of prayers have been offered up by our caring community, and as a result, miracles have occurred. I'm honored to live in such a place and join each of you as we experience the dawning of a new day and look with a new hope to the future. Thank you.
Well, let me, as president of the board, you know, express, you know, the sorrow that we all felt to the parents, to the students that were involved in this horrific accident. But like has been stated with Sheriff Furlong, the first responders, the fire chief, we all see how valuable these people are. You know, with compassion and empathy, I mean, they have to do just a horrible, horrible job, but they do it in such a way that makes us all feel extremely proud that they're Let me say, like, to some of the teachers and coaches, I know Robert Maugh, you know, Frank, they kept me informed as things went on. I know I talked to Robert Maugh and his daughter, Brooklyn, who were up there at the hospital as long, as well as Frank, and a lot of the coaches up there from day one with the kids and with the parents. And they just didn't do it one time, but they did it over and over again, just in support. And that's some horrible, horrible times. And we move along, Maya McKenzie, Angela Golick in that candlelight vigil, and the sheriff in closing off the streets. I mean, what a powerful show of love and support in our community and for everyone involved. And that was things that I know personally I won't forget, you know, just going forward as how a community reaches out. And Jasmine, as I said before, she's something special, you know, and jumping in right away. To all the other teachers and the support groups in the high schools and all of our schools that were there at a moment known as for the kids, it didn't end with, you know, that day. It continued, and it still continues, and kids still talk about it and are still emotionally disturbed even today. And it's a special thank you to all of you. So, and before I go, close this, but I'd like to turn it over to the board who may want to make comments and thank you also.
Yeah, without repeating what trustee Swirzick just said, I mean, I just want to say I agree with all of his comments, but I want to just take another approach on this too. And we're certainly very thankful for everybody who helped. I mean, we can't say enough for the first responders, the students, the parents, and everybody. But, you know, for me, another side of this is just making sure that all these students know just how amazingly important each and every one of them are. Really, there wasn't a dry eye in this whole community, whether people shed their grief in public or did so in private. You know, everybody thought about each one of these kids that were involved in this accident. And we all have times when you feel sad, you feel lonely, you feel like your best isn't good enough for whatever reason. And all those things are part of growing up, and it really never ends. But the one thing you should never lose sight of is really how important each and every one of you truly, truly are to not just your family and your friends, but to the community as a whole. And I just wanted to make sure you all hear that and hopefully know that, that, you know, this community loves every one of you. And again, you're truly, truly more important than you know. So, thanks.
Just thank you to everybody, and, you know, people always ask me why I moved back here after I went to college after graduating here, and this is one of the reasons why. We are Carson Proud, and we are Carson Together, and I just love this community, and I'm so thankful that everyone is here.
Yeah, to echo it and get my time, thank you to first responders. I have an intimate knowledge of what you deal with, and so, thank you. And it's certainly not fun, and that's one of the hard parts about working in a smaller community too, because you own it a lot of times, and you know these people and live amongst them. And I think this, and everything that we saw since, and the care and the commitment is what makes this community great. And like Stacy and myself, you know, I was born here, grew up here, and moved away for a bit, and my wife and I chose to come back and live here. And this is why, because it is a community with a bunch of loving and caring people. So, thank you all, just personally and from the board too. Thank you. You've all done wonderful.
And board members, could we just stand and give everyone a hand? Okay, and thank you, and we'll, we're gonna take a five-minute recess right now. Well, now reconvene the school board meeting, and we're on agenda item number four. It's the board reports and board member comments, and this is...
Mr. Stokes having announcements?
And we'll hear from, let's hear from Pioneer High School first.
Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Corbett's 3D Engineering Club is seeking more students...
Oh, excuse me. Could you set your name for the record, Sharon?
Oh, I'm Casey Beaufort, and Mr. Corbett's 3D Engineering Club is seeking more students who are interested in exploring possibilities of 3D printing. Contact Mr. Corbett for additional information. And Pioneer Expeditions will be starting next week during lunch. Students interested in creating outdoor adventures need to contact Mr. Jordan. The ski club will be going downhill skiing on Friday, January 26th. Interested students need to see Mr. Corbett to pick up the field trip forms. And also, there will be a rocksport climbing field trip on Friday, February 2nd. Students who are interested should contact Mr. Lorian for the permission slips. Remember, there's no school Monday. Teachers will be participating in a professional development day. Thank you. That concludes our announcements of Pioneer High School.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Carson High.
So, my name is Jessel. So, tomorrow, January 24th, there will be a student council meeting after school, and any further information you need us can come check it out. And then, there will also be no school. It's also Professional Development Day. It is next Monday, which is January 29th. And then, we have our Winter Fest dates up, and they are gonna be from February 5th to February 10th. And for any further information, it will be on the Carson High website, so anybody who wants to go check out the dates and any activities, it's up there. So, yeah, that concludes.
Thank you. And Laurel?
Okay, for Fritsch Elementary, get it on there. For Fritsch Elementary School, they wanted to announce that they're going to have a Family Math Night on February 7th from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Ryan, nothing? Okay, Don?
Tuesday, January 30th, a week from tonight, at 7 o'clock, is the 15th Annual Jazz Extravaganza. Right here, Bob Boldrick Theater, and the Carson Middle School Jazz Band is joined by the local professional group, M... And it, the Carson Middle School Jazz Band is joined by the local professional group, Mile High Jazz Band. And tickets are $10, and please come and join us.
Thank you. Joe?
For Carson High School, Mrs. Fuson wanted me to mention that PTSA holds their meetings the second Monday of each month, 5:30 in the library. The next meeting scheduled for February 13th. Newcomers are always welcome, so if you've wanted to get involved and haven't had the time, or you know somebody that might be interested, please pass the word on to them. College Night was on January 10th, and for those who don't know what that is, that's where former Carson High graduates come back to Carson High School and talk to the students and give them a student's perspective on what college is like. Everything from studying, to dorm life, to campus life, to kind of all the things us as adults maybe might gloss over. The kids seem to pick it up and do a pretty good job. Options Night already happened last, earlier this week, I think, or last week. But if you missed it, you can check the website for information or contact one of the guidance counselors, Mrs. Grunert or Mrs. Reyes, and they can get you information about AP classes, Jump Start classes, and what choices might be best for your student. Spring sports signups are going on from January 12th through February 14th. And also, ACT prep. As you know, all juniors are now required to take the ACT. And Tuesdays and Thursdays beginning January 30th, that prep will start. So, encourage your students to take advantage of that, because if you haven't taken one of those exams before, the first time's always a bit of a shock. UNR College Rep is going to be visiting the campus January 30th at 1:15 p.m., which I believe is a Tuesday. They'll be at the Tech Center Conference Room. And then, just students who are interested in scholarships, the priority scholarship deadline for UNR is February 1st. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. Mike?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Stacy?
So, I apologize, because my report's a little long tonight. There's a lot going on. First of all, for Pioneer, we wanted to congratulate them. They've been asked by the Department of Education to participate in the 2018 Mega Conference, the Initiatives in Action Education for Generations to Come. It's in collaboration with the University of Nevada, Reno, and the International Center for Leadership in Education and the Department of Education. And features effective programs and practices that support each student's learning. Selected Nevada schools have been invited to present their successful practice, and I'm glad to announce that PHS is one of them. So congratulations to them and their staff. We look forward to hearing how that goes. Then I had an NIAA meeting. And in case you missed it, Carson stayed in the 4A North. AJ, officials, wages are going up 3% in the next year, so you have to budget accordingly. I don't know if that's you or Carson High.
No, they're not.
Okay. They're not going up?
No.
Okay, I'll tell Vince. We passed a no-flash photography policy, so, and indoor events, you cannot use your, if you're taking pictures of your kids, you can't use a flash. It's really distracting to the officials and has caused some problems. And then, we wanted to congratulate Carson High's former coach and athletic director, and I'm sure there's two of us, or three of us on here, that had Coach Bateman as a coach or an athletic director. And he is being inducted into the 2018 NIAA Hall of Fame on March 22nd. We are really proud. It's kind of full circle when you've had that coach and then you got to vote him into the Hall of Fame, so that was a proud moment for me, too. And then, just to shout out, the NIAA has top 10 Student Athlete of the Year scholarships, and they take applications, and it's on their website. Last year, we didn't have anybody from Carson, so I'm hoping that somebody will apply for those. And it's a $500 scholarship, and then there's a dinner in April where you're recognized with a portrait. And then, for NASB, we had 91% of all trustees finished all of their training for the last year. Unfortunately, I couldn't present at the interim education committee. I was at the NIAA meeting. But we had Bridget Peterson from Lyon County, who's our VP for NASB, present, and she did a great, great job. Couldn't have done any better. It's probably better she went instead of me. And if you missed what went on, it's on the website, and Dottie sent out an email with the highlights of that meeting. And then, just a reminder, the professional development for NASB is February 3rd from 8:30 to noon. There's going to be lunch afterwards, and you need to let Renee know before you go, so she can let Dottie know in the morning. Thank you.
Okay, the president has nothing to report this evening. Agenda item number five, that's association reports. Nope, seen none.
And agenda item number six, that's the public comment.
Public comment. Um, okay. Is there any public comments this evening? Seen none. We'll move on to agenda item number seven. And that's the progress update of school improvement plans related to the Nevada School Performance Framework. That's two-star ranking for Empire Elementary School for discussion only, and that's Susan Squires.
My schoolmates back here were giving me the power as I came up, which is always needed when you speak in front of the board. Good evening, President Swirzik, members of the board, Mr. Stokes, and other district office members. Thank you for letting me take time to share with you this evening. I, too, am a Carson High graduate, and listening to all of that and being involved with Dr. Ward and her family, I, too, am very proud to be part of this school district. And this being my second year at Empire, I can tell you right now, there's no place I would rather be an educator than in Carson City, and especially at Empire. And I want to thank my team members that are all here to just give us that support tonight as we share our achievements with you. So, I do have a PowerPoint to show you, and what I'd like to do, we did a very deep data dig yesterday at our early release day, and our staff really got down and dirty with their data. So down and dirty that they wore jeans to school, because it got dirty yesterday. But we, what I have to share with you today is what we came up with with this data dig. So, when we met at the beginning of the school year, and Dr. Ward and I presented to you what our plan was for our school, the goals for Empire were for 50% or more of our students to score proficient on the reading S-Back, for 30% or more of our students to score proficient on the math S-Back, and that our spring MAP score, the projections of those would correlate with S-Back. What we feel and know that we need to do at Empire is we really need to close the gap for our students. And our plan, as presented to you at the beginning of the year, was to increase the capacity of our teachers to provide comprehensive writing instruction, to provide our staff with training in thinking maps and response to literature, train our staff in writing the weed away, so that we can educate our second language learners, to use the Northern Nevada Writing Project, and to equip our teachers with the ability to score their students' writing based on what S-Back, the writing for the S-Back test looks like. So that was our plan. After winter MAP, we put all of our data together, and this is what we came up with. This graph shows the percentage of students across our grade levels K through 5 who made 150% growth. And this isn't something that we've generally looked at in the past, but as we look at the star rating and how we receive our points, we know that proficiency is a ways away for us. But we do know what we do really well at our school is we help our kids grow, and we help our kids close the gap in their learning. So for our kids to make 150% growth, this meant that they made the projected growth that they needed to make on MAP and then some. And for us to close the gap and get closer to proficiency, we have to help our kids be able to do that. So, we have math and ELA, and you can see in Kinder, oh, criminy, I'm sorry, but I don't have those numbers in front of me. So, just looking at our data in Kinder and ELA, those, this is where we scored in our kids making 150% growth. So in third grade, you can see that in math and ELA, over 50% of our kids made 150% growth. Yes.
You know, just curious, because you said you just did a deep data dig. Why do you, what are your reasons you think that second grade isn't making the growth that the other grades are showing?
So, that is something that we discussed in a lot of detail. One thing that happened when they took the test in the winter, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I just would want to make sure I'm telling you this correctly.
I'm Becca.
She's my Becca. Was that our students in the second grade, who normally took a test that was read to them, now were taking a test that they had to read.
So, Michelle Paul for the record. In, oh, I'm sorry. So, when we took the MAPS test in the fall of 2017, our students took the version, it's called K2, which is read to them. So they listen to, they can listen to the question, they can listen to the answers, and then select the right one from that. And then, the state determined that in the winter and from here on out, every second grader would be taking the 2 through 5 version of the test, which is not read to them. And although, some of our kids, when they were taking the version that was read to them, they did get to those higher levels, and then the reading starts pulling away. For our students, who are, a large portion of them are ELL learners, taking that support away was difficult. So we did see, so we didn't see the growth that we wanted, we're hoping to see. But we're hoping that next year, when they start off taking the more difficult version, and then they continue with more difficult version, that we will see more growth from our second graders. But that test gets a little hard for them, especially when they're used to having that support of being read to.
This isn't something that just happened at Empire Elementary School last year. When we had training as a district with NWA for the MAP assessment, they advised us on what test the second graders were expected to take, based on their, the work with their research and their company. So we started off the year following that direction. And then, when the state made decisions around Read By 3 after the contracts with NWA were settled, they made these decisions, they made decisions differently. And it's, one's not right or wrong, it's just that they made the decision after the first 30 days, and we had to have our students, per the law, tested within the first 30 days. And so that's, every school got caught in that decision change by the state across the district. It's not just Empire or Fremont. You need to know that. It's kind of a, the business rules changed while the schools were following the law. We're not the only district that got caught in that. Others had not had that advice from NWA or had sought out extra training. Cheryl Riquetta was able to set that up for us last year. And so, it was just a business rule change by the state, and we got caught in the middle of it this year.
One of the things that our staff does really well is they spend time preparing our kids to take a certain type of test. Not teaching to the test, but practicing a certain type of test that we know they're going to be tested on. For example, the S-Back, they have, since we came back to school in January, they've been spending time helping their kids understand how to write a good answer for the S-Back. Because this was kind of sprung on us, we didn't have time to take our second graders in and to show them that this is the difference in the test, and this is how it's going to look different, and prepare them to take that kind of test. So they were caught a little off guard and not quite ready. Now, one of the discussions that we had yesterday was, that being said, that's a second-grade level test, and they should be reading as second graders. And that was kind of something our staff had to process and think about going forward, is that they are all going to have to read it, whether they are reading at a second-grade level or not. And so what are the things that we are going to do to start preparing them to take a second-grade level test if they're not second-grade readers? So, we took that, and we've done a lot of thinking and talking about what that's going to look like. So that will be exciting to see in the spring, what improvements we will show in second grade, because now they will have taken the test for a second time.
And I just want to say thanks for clarifying, because that's, I would have been thinking about that the whole presentation.
Well, thank you for asking. Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Paul. Okay, so, these three charts show our ILP data. So our ILPs are the students on Read By Read by Grade 3 who are required to have individual learning plans. As we've said before, we ask all of our grade levels, Kinder through 5, to do individual learning plans for our students, because we feel that it is important enough to do. The numbers that I think are important for you to look at, if you look at the first chart, and those numbers come from our Fall MAP tests. The total number of ILP students that we had in the fall were 320. Now kindergarten didn't need to, they weren't required to write ILPs for their Kinder students until after this Fall MAP test, I mean, the Winter MAP test. But they know, because of last year's progress, how important it is to create those ILPs and do individual work with students. So they chose to take their fall scores and do ILPs anyway, even though they weren't required to do that. So we have Kinder scores up, or Kinder numbers up there as well. So at the, at Fall MAP testing, we had 320 students total in our school that needed an individual reading plan because they fell below the 40th percentile in MAP. The next chart shows you that of those 320 ILPs from the fall, we decreased those numbers to 203 with the Winter MAP testing. Now, the one on the bottom, because the law, the Read By Grade 3 law does say that students who take the Winter MAP, the Winter MAP test, who fall below the 40th percentile, who did not fall below the 40th percentile in the fall, do need to have an ILP. So that was something different that we did as well. So if they were not below 40th in the fall, but now in the winter were below the 40th percentile, we needed to put them on an ILP. So the bottom box total number shows you that our current ILPs for reading, or language, are 260, which is still well below our 320 that we started with, and that's with adding some kids onto ILPs. And I wanted to share this with you as well. So, at Empire, we have created IMPs, which are individual math plans for our students, under the same premise that students who fall below the 40th in math also deserve some individualized attention. They're not as official. We don't meet with parents, but we do do extra differentiated work with these students. After the Fall test, we had 318 students, K through 5, who fell below the 40th percentile and were worked with individually. After the Winter test, we decreased that to 242 students. And, oh, the bottom map, or the bottom one doesn't show the, the bottom one doesn't have that extra number on there. It didn't show up on the slide. Somebody want to calculate that for us? So, again, we added some who, after Winter MAP, fell below 40, 40th percentile, and that number is...
Sorry. It's not showing up. 284.
And here's my STEM person back here.
Yep, 284.
284?
Yep.
All right. So where we stand right now is 284 students who have, are falling below the 40th percentile. So that's also is a decrease in the number of students that we're working with in math. Sorry about that. I didn't notice that it didn't show up on there.
They're not thinking numbers.
I'm sorry?
Thinking with numbers. Do they have all the kids sit around?
Sorry. Are they? Yeah, math, yeah. We should have made an exercise.
That's what I was, I was trying to have you do that. I was seeing up here how many ways you could figure that out. Thank you for using your calculator, Ms. Wiggins back there, and Mr. Fueeling as well. I also wanted to show you the progress that our X-Factor students made on their, I'm sorry, on their MAP scores for winter. This is, it's, it's showing you something a little different. So in ELA, you can see that above 50% of our X-Factor students increased their MAP scores, or made progress on their MAP scores. And close to 60% of our X-Factor students, their MAP scores raised above the 40th percentile. And those are our kids who stay in the after-school program, and that's in ELA. And in math, close to 70% of our X-Factor students increased their scores. And close to 60% of our X-Factor students are now above the 40th percentile in MAP. So our after-school program is doing some really good work. So if we look at proficiency on the S-Back test, hoping that math will really project to that S-Back test, proficiency on that S-Back test. Where we stand right now is a little over 20% of our kids, well, in fall, a little over 20% of our kids would have been proficient if we would have taken those scores on the S-Back test. But our winter scores show that 40, about 40% of our students right now, if we took it, if it, if it correlates, will be proficient on the S-Back test in ELA. And then in math, math, we didn't, there's not an increase at all, they're the same exact scores, just about over 10% of our students will be proficient in math, projected from the MAP testing. So our teachers got to see this too. We've worked a couple of years with our ILP kids, so we're kind of on a roll, our math program, getting to know our math program, we realize that. So that's projected proficiency on S-Back. So our next steps is just continual, continued professional development. We plan on more intensive data discussions. We have response to literature training happening through WNRDPP, RPDP, that's coming up. Grade level grading and planning, math differentiation. Our pre-K is now getting involved in writing instruction with Rachel McKinney from the state. She's going to be doing writing instruction for our pre-K teachers, so we can start in pre-K with writing. We have the author Gary Hoag that's coming to our school and is going to be doing writing instruction with our teachers, writing with our kids, and writing with our parents in the evening. We are going to be working with our teachers on using writing in math. And then we're going to be doing instructional rounds at our school, where our teachers actually get to go in and see our own teachers. Right now, we're doing it at other schools, but see our own teachers teach, so that we can gather from what's happening at our school and duplicate that in other classrooms in our school. So that's the Empire Plan. One thing I want to add to that next step, that I didn't put on there, but it came to light in our data dig yesterday. We have been studying high-poverty schools who are also high-proficient schools. If you really want some great reading, Mr. Stokes bought me this book, High, Turning High Poverty Schools into High Performing Schools, it's an amazing book. But one of the things we decided at our school was the very most important thing for us to do, and that was build relationships with our kids. Knowing students from high-poverty populations need relationships built, and our staff has on a mission to build relationships with our kids, so that they are, when they come to school, they are ready to learn. So, any questions for us?
Questions, comments from the board?
Us, Ryan. Not a question, so much comment. I, I think, from visiting with you and stuff, I think, I think you're doing an excellent job, as far as making a plan, and, and, and being open with it, because what you have to do is recognize things and move forward. And I, and it's not fun to stand up here and talk about some of this stuff, and I, I think that's a good mark of your, your leadership, to stand up here and say, we are going to move forward and fix this, and so, and currently doing it too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Susan, yeah, thank you. I think, I think first of all, congratulations. I mean, when we're looking at kids that are, you know, exceeding 150% and whatnot, those are, you know, that's good, we're moving in the right direction. So I, I think all this stuff is good. I'm always curious when we talk about, you know, getting parents involved and whatnot. You mentioned the evening program that's going to be coming up. Historically, those are always hard, it's hard to fill seats in those kinds of things. Have you had some evening programs with the families, and have you seen, you know, an increase in family involvement?
To tell you one of the bigger parent involvement things that we did this year, it stemmed from the 21st Century Conference, because we, we received the 21st Century Grant. With our parent advocate and Adrian Wiggins, who is our math coach, we do, twice a month, we do snacks and stories and math and munchies. And at those events, of course, there's food, but we also give books away to all of our parents and kids, and whomever comes, any little children they bring, whoever, everybody walks away with a book. And we read a story to them, and we teach them how to question, how to predict, how to do, you know, all of those things that we do as good readers with their kids. We, they, they sit with their child, we read the story together, we do an activity together, and they leave there with information on how to read with your children. On the math and munchie side, we do the same kinds of, kind of thing. We have a math, a story related to math, we have books related to math that we give out on those days, and we do math activities with them. And the interesting thing that we have found with that, we started in our parent advocates' room, because we were like, ooh, it was 7:30 in the morning, we weren't quite sure what we were going to get. We were so jammed into that room, we couldn't even do our activity. So we moved into the, into the multipurpose room for that afterwards. And we continue to have more and more parents come to those. We do them before school and after school, so we can hit two different parents who need two different times. The, the really interesting thing about it is, we are getting parents to those events that we've never seen come to events before. And all of our teachers who are involved in it have mentioned it every time, those parents never come. So that's really a great thing to see. We haven't had as many night events, because they don't, they aren't always as successful. Not to say that we're not, we have STEM Night coming up, and our author coming, but those other little events that we're doing have really, have really been successful this year.
You know, I just wanted to say that, number one, I, I think that when you talked about relationships, that's huge. And I think that the way, it'd be really easy to be kind of defensive about, you know, school performance with, you know, data that you're not really proud to, to stand up here and talk about. You know, there's a lot of things to work on, and so I think those relationships, not just between staff and students, but also between you and your staff, that's huge, the, you're kind of framing it in a positive way, and, you know, everybody's kind of getting down and working it out together. And I guess one of the things I'm wondering about is, in your, your plans, either for math or reading, typically what kind of interventions are you doing that's showing those results? So like, what are you, what's kind of giving you your biggest bang for your buck, I guess?
Okay, two different things. One of them is, our teachers have, have become very proficient at using the continuum of learning that goes with the MAP test. So they can take the students' MAP scores, and they can dig down to the very basics of what those students are missing. And even if it's just way down to phonics, which is at the bottom of the reading hierarchy, very bottom. And that includes our fifth grade, fourth grade students as well. Those teachers have looked at those scores and that continuum and said, have found that, wow, I have fifth graders that are, don't have phonics skills. And they've taken those fifth graders back to what they need to become good readers that they somehow missed or weren't ready for when they were in those grade levels. And so we've really focused on that, really looking at going way back to the basics. So we feel that that's one of the things that has made a huge difference, is filling those holes that those kids are missing. The other thing is that we have found that is making a difference, is going to make more of a difference, is that we have to expose our kids to their grade level literature. And we haven't been doing that in, in the recent past. We put them into groups based on their reading level or their instructional level, and that takes them away from the, the level of reading that they're, this like, second grade reading. They need to be exposed to second grade text if they're a second grader, even if they're not reading at a second grade level. Those are the, those are the words that are on the tests. Those are the words that are on all of the assessments that they're taking, if we never expose them to that. When they see it, they don't have a chance to know it. So even if it's reading aloud, or just putting the text in front of them and helping them see those words, that's one thing that we're trying, that we are finding is, is successful, because we're exposing them to the grade level they need to be exposed to, at the same time, teaching them at the level that they're at. So I think those are two of the things that we are finding are, have been successful.
Well, we're very thankful that you've come back to the Carson City School District too, and we're really impressed by the culture change that's happened at Empire under your leadership. Since you added the extra professional development days, have you had any backlash from the parents because of the extra time?
We have not. We have not had any backlash. And because of the extra professional development time, the change in the writing that's happening in our school is overwhelming. And when the principals came to do instructional rounds at our school last week and walked into our, walked into our classrooms, they noted the writing that was posted in our classrooms and in our hallways. And we haven't posted writing in our hallways for years. And I have teachers on a daily basis bringing me students' writing and saying, oh my gosh, look at what this little one wrote. And I think that's going to be huge for our proficiency in the long run. So no, we have not.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you staff for putting in those extra hours and building those relationships. We're very impressed with the changes. Thank you for your time.
Susan?
Yes.
No, I think this is exactly what you said, when Jennifer and you writing across the curriculum, you did it. I want to commend you on your team. Just, you know, it's got to be a change, it's probably a change, I'm just, I'm going to talk to you when you're out there, but it's probably been a change for you, but you, you seem to have raised the bar for the kids. And it's just kind of exciting to see that you, you have a team that's saying, we're doing it. We're not going to think of, we're doing it. So, again, thank you. And now, I, can I just stop by any time and?
Yes.
Watch your team in action?
My goodness, they would love it.
Okay.
They would love to show off what they're doing.
Okay.
Right? You'd love it, right? Yeah. They'd love it.
Yes, Mrs. Paul.
We'll see you next week. Yeah, next week, I'll give you a call, and it'll be next week.
I just wanted to add, I'm sorry, one thing. Mr. Walker, you said that, you know, it's not easy standing up here and presenting data that is not that great, but I have to tell you, our school right now is celebrating that data. They do not see that data as that is not that great. They see that as moving forward and making changes, and we celebrated yesterday. And if you look, if you have time, closely look at our star rating and those numbers and the next level, because when we broke it all down yesterday, we are, we are centimeters, that's not the right reference, but points away from the next point. I mean, in every one of those areas, when we broke it down, we are just, you know, we're so close, and they realize that. And they are excited to put in the extra work, so that we just bump ourselves up. And this, the, these teachers are, they are amazing. And every time we do a data dig, that's not easy, it's not easy for everybody to see your numbers. They embrace every bit of it. They embrace every bit of it, and they walk back to their classrooms, and they do exactly what we talked about, and they do it to the best. It's incredible what you see. And I just have to give all the credit to them, because Mike and I are just the ones asking, and they're the ones going out there and performing, so.
And I just want to clarify, that's exactly what I was saying. It would be really easy to frame it differently. And the way that you're framing it and celebrating the success you have, I think is, that's commendable. And so that's, that's exactly what I'm saying, is impressive.
Thank you.
Well, Susan, thank you, and thank you to Team Empire.
Thank you.
So we'll see you next week.
I heard.
Can I just say something about Empire? I was there yesterday for their data dig, and I know that Susan had, and her team had presented the teachers with the data. I mean, every teacher's name was there, they had their math data, they had reading data, they had data from last year, so they could see how they were performing this year as a group versus last year as a group. Everybody's name, everybody saw, everything. And on Susan's introduction, it was Empire Essentials. All data is good data, no blame, no shame, side by side, we're in this together, celebrate. And she did just that. She took the, they went through the data, and they were talking about the growth piece with 150%, because if those students, we don't close the gap with that group of students over there, they're never going to meet, make that bar. The other thing that I saw that I thought was impressive, and she mentioned it, was that she took that NSPF report that I shared with you at the, one of the previous board meetings, and she went through each one of those elements, and showed them how far away or how close they were to the next star level for each of those elements. And you could hear those teachers, they were like kids, oh, oh, you, because they realized that they were that close in some of these elements. So I appreciate the work that she, her leadership, did to pull that meeting together, but it was very upbeat. They role-played, they talked to each other, they, they coached each other, asked questions, they wanted to know what you were doing with those students that got you to the 150%. What did you do? And they were sharing that with each other. And so I want to let you know that it was a great day for Empire.
Thank you. Lastly, we, I presented all of the same information to our PAR professionals today in our classified meeting, and when we went over that data as well, all of our PARs were like, oh, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, we're so close. And our PARs and all of our classified employees also make goals, have plans, and make decisions on what they can do differently with their kids when they meet with them as well. It takes the entire school to do it, and they're as on board as our teachers are. Thank you so much for letting me present.
Can I add one thing? No. Sorry, but this is important.
Can you see the? All right. Michelle Paul, I'm the Assistant Principal. And one of the things that Susan didn't talk about, that I think that needs to be pointed out, is we made goals for every grade level, and we presented those goals to each one of the classes, and each one of the classes, classes has a poster in their, in their classroom, that if seven students in fifth grade need to move up on their MAP scores, and kids made commitments to being one of those seven students, I could be one of those seven students that can, that can move up on my MAP scores. I could be one of those kids that changes it for us. And that is an important piece, because whatever we do is to inspire them to be better who they are. And those, those kids are excited to tell you, Mrs. Paul, I was one of those seven kids that moved up. And I'm like, high five, good for you. So that's something that we need to celebrate too, because it's not us, it's the kids. And it's them that's basically doing the hard work. And so we need to remember that. Thank you.
Well, thank you to all of you for, for taking this next step. Well, thank you to all of you for, for taking this next step.
Okay, now, just, let's go to the next floor. Let's go to Jennifer.
Okay, it's progress update of school improvement plans related to Nevada's school performance framework. Two-star ranking for Fremont Elementary School. For discussion only.
Good evening, members of the board. Jennifer Ward to Joseph for the record. Um, I'm going to make it through this presentation without crying. Uh, I think, well, okay, well, all right. Um, let's just get started. All right, so, um, I too am a graduate of Carson High, just a little later than Ms. Squires. And there's no competition in our schools, and so, um, it's a nice friendly competition, right? Uh, so we started out with, um, presenting to the board our current S-Back projections based on our fall data. And our winter basically confirmed those same projected numbers, if not dropping just a little bit. And part of that has, um, to do with some changes that we're making at Fremont, and, um, I think they would actually be expected when, um, you take into all the account of what we've been doing at Fremont. So we still have our goal of fifty percent, um, for reading, passing the S-Back. We're projected at about twenty-eight percent, um, based on our fall and winter scores. So it's a audacious goal. Same with our thirty percent of our students passing for math, and currently we're sitting at about eighteen, nineteen percent, um, for our students who are proficient, um, based on our MAP scores. Uh, and so we have the idea of identifying root causes to our low student achievement. Um, I'm new to Fremont this year, and some of the processes that I've brought with me are also new, and so it takes a while to get used to me, and it takes a while to get used to process. So I would love to be able to show you graphs that look similar to this one, um, with continuous improvement, which I anticipate would be year two, because right now it kind of looks like this. This is our journey. It's messy, and it's, um, it's hard because we've had to, um, tear it back, kind of look at it in the raw form, and to see where our systems are, um, maybe not aligned with student achievement or to reach maximum growth. And so we've kind of taken ourselves back and figured out where our root causes are and fix some of our systems. Um, as Ms. Kima indicated back in October, part of our, um, energy level or synergy level that was felt at Fremont may, and their sense of urgency, uh, which is our overall goal for, um, one of our achievement plans for this school year, was not, it wasn't burning. It wasn't, um, well-known. They, our staff had looked at a lot of old data in the past, and the star rating kind of came in and socked us in the gut, um, at a school level. And so part of that is to understand what a school rating is, to understand exactly what, um, Susan's going through with her staff, but to take it back down to getting our teachers really, really familiar with MAP and understanding the statistics that go along with MAP, and being able to use that to plan for instruction for their students. So we've really, we have been working on our capacity. We've worked with our Mastery Connect and showing evidence of student learning, and through Thinking Maps to address the writing through the curriculum, all the way from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. And so those are the components that we have, um, spent a lot of our, uh, professional development time on. And then when we've been looking at, we've had, um, a lot of committee work, and that's kind of what we're looking here, is we've been setting up a lot of expectations, expectations of what we expect for ourselves, of each other, um, setting up expectations of communication and how we communicate both, um, with our parents, with our students, letting them know their goals, letting them be able to be part of that process, letting them see their progress, um, and setting it up with each other, whether it be from our, um, special education teachers to our general education, or our second language teachers to our general education and back and forth. And so how to simplify and work on, um, systems of communication, and then the setting up of collection of evidence of student learning. And throughout the units, not looking at just end test results, um, not looking at the end of the, um, unit exams, but looking at how every single lesson should have some sort of evidence of student learning. What did you accomplish in that forty-five minutes or hour-long lesson? What was the end result for the kids? Where did they grow? And so, and then being able to look at all those multiple sets of data, and we have a lot of data. So, and it's making sure that we're using that data to inform our practice and to inform our next steps. And so when we looked at our culture of improvement, we've started a climate committee in which we have, um, in the raw, rawest form, looked at what, um, our site teachers, classified, um, every single staff member has the opportunity to really itemize where, um, our climate and our culture of our building is amiss, and to figure out ways to fix it. So our Climate Solutions Team is really looking at some very hard data, um, from our staff to identify where we, where we struggle, and where we need to bolster up, and where we need to, um, get it done. And so that Climate Committee meets every single week, and it has grown from six members to upwards of sixteen that show up almost an hour early for school. Um, and so that investment in our school culture has been, um, a huge win for our site. Um, the other was our School Improvement Team, and I'm going to highlight their work, um, that they did with staff input. All of this takes so much time, so much time out of our teachers to say, hey, can you answer these four survey questions? But until you actually understand what your staff thinks and what they feel, it's really hard to make, um, promises, policies, and procedures that you don't have buy-in to. And some of it, I, I will be the first to admit, buy-in comes after you see, see results, and I'm not waiting for buy-in, but part of it is to understand the process. And so we've spent a lot of time doing that. Uh, and we know that it's a process, and so that's really part of understanding our year. Our data dig was brutal. It was, it was a tough, um, a tough opportunity to look at our student data, and I think, um, having not been there, I don't know if it was the first time that teachers looked at it and went, oh, that hurts, or wow, I thought my kids would have done better. How could I have better prepared them? What could I have done differently? And to realize it's a snapshot in time, but to kind of look at it pretty brutally honest with themselves and say, what do I need to do different? Um, and that's a process, and that's, that's where you go from good to great. Um, and so we are working on that process, and I completely believe in our trajectory of being exactly where Susan is, um, where she's able to report pretty phenomenal growth. We have pockets, we just don't have pervasive. And so, um, we celebrate our pockets of growth, but we also have to keep on looking at saying, how do we go in that continuous improvement, um, component? Time's up. Um, this is our most recent work, and I'm actually, um, probably, I mean, it, it was one of those that, um, I would have loved to give the board a copy of it, um, but I know it has to be in, by a certain time. And we, so, we were working on this Friday night, 5:30. This was our work. Um, so our School Improvement Team, which, um, consists of every, um, factor of our building, whether it be classified, our special ed department, our ELL department, uh, members of our primary grades, our upper grades, they all contribute to this. And we had, um, had every staff member asked to submit their version of our vision of Fremont, and what is their version of our mission, and what guiding principles guide our work as, as educators. And part of that, then homework to the School Improvement Team, because we don't have enough time to do it, so it's homework, um, they had to summarize, and then they submitted their summaries, and then from there, we were able to digest, and we came up with this vision and mission, and so I'm unveiling it tonight, as the vision, the vision and mission of Fremont Elementary. And the vision we look at is, this is our promise to our parents. As you give us, dear kiddos, your most precious thing, um, we promise to foster that lifelong learner and to reach their maximum potential. And as a mission of our school, how are we going to do that? This is our get up, out of bed. What we tend to do every single morning is when you look yourself in the mirror and you say, it's time to go to work. And this is why. We're that community of learners who's dedicated and committed to providing high quality. High quality, that's important. That high-quality education, that high-quality student-centered instruction that promotes that social, emotional, and academic growth in a safe and productive environment. And all of this, as Susan had kind of, uh, brought up in her presentation, the importance of student relationships, the importance of knowing that your students, that they know that they're more than a test score to you, that their whole being matters, and how they are approaching life and how they deal with some of the things that they bring through those doors could blow us as adults away. The things that those kiddos deal with, and then they sit down and take a MAP test and take it seriously. That's a gift. I mean, it's a, it's an amazing accomplishment for some of our kiddos that are coming in. Our kindergarten scores are hard. They're fifty-two below the fif, the fortieth percentile. Fifty-two percent of our kindergartners are already below at the fortieth percentile. That's a lot, that means a lot of gains before they have to reach, read by grade three, expectations for third grade. So the fact that they're coming in and they're giving it all, this is our commitment to our students, that we'll give it all right back. And so this is our mission, and this is our work. The next part was our guiding principles, and this is basically, in Fremont, we have the Falcon Five for our students, and that is to be safe, to be respectful of yourself, of others, to be responsible, to be an active learner. And those are like our rules to live by as a Falcon. And so these guiding principles are really our rules as the adults in the building. Although I do want my staff to be safe, to be an active learner, the Falcon Five really captures our students. So this is ours, um, our guiding principles, and they ended up spelling out the word aspire after you rearranged them a little bit. Um, but that accountability, being student-centered in all of our decision-making, which can be very difficult. That's a very difficult thing as adults when, you know, oh, you're going to have to move classrooms, or, or you might have to move a grade level, or, and, because it's in the best interest of students. Uh, perseverance, not to give up, not to give in, and just as much as we need it with our students, we need it in our staff members. Um, and our integrity, which we felt was very important. Our responsibility, it's an overwhelming, responsible, um, profession, and we hold a lot of responsibility. As I said, our, uh, five-hundred-and-sixty kids that come through our building, their parents give us them their most precious thing on earth and entrust that their education is taken care of. And we have to make it happen in this, you know, eight, or from eight-thirty to three-fifteen every single day for those kiddos. And part of it is not to use any of our excuses of parent involvement, or whether or not they come to an after-school program, or, um, whatnot. We give them a hundred percent because we are responsible. And then excellence, and realizing that excellence is just not an act, it's a habit. I think that was from Aristotle. Um, but really realizing that every single day. And that is something that, um, I truly believe, that is, we embrace the vision and mission and the guiding principles, um, which is our new work at Fremont. I think, um, student achievement will follow, um, student relationships will follow, parent involvement will follow. Um, and I think our work has, um, really gotten us off on the right path, and when we talk about finding a way for students to reach their maximum potential, I can see that trajectory. Um, maybe not immediately, I can't make any false promises, I think that would be wrong. Um, but I definitely believe that I can stand in front of you in a year from now and be able to continue our good work that, um, the Fremont staff has really embraced wholeheartedly, and kind of, we've all kind of come to that awakening. So it's time to get going. So that's pretty much, um, of course, that five-star is always, um, yep, we're, we're heading that direction. So we're just missing a couple right now, but we'll get there.
Questions, comments from the board? Go ahead, Joe.
So Jennifer, you had mentioned it before, you know, your first year at Fremont, there's going to, and I agree with you, there's going to be some buy-in, you gotta kind of get, you gotta get all the, you know, the team in place and on board and everybody moving in the right direction before you can see the kids really benefiting from all of that. But just, how do you think, how do you think it's going so far? I mean, is buy-in, is it, you know, is it starting to happen, you think? Is it still too early to tell, or, you know? I, I guess in general terms, you think we're going to be in good shape so we start the second year, hit the ground running?
Uh, you know, I think, um, around November, I probably would have burst into tears. Um, if you ask me that question, it was rough. It's been, it was, it was not an easy first semester. Um, I don't think it was easy for many people. I'm sometimes a lot to take, and I know it. Um, I have very high expect, okay, yeah, so some of my, some of my people might know me a little bit, yeah, thank you, Mr. Wallace. Um, I, I understand my high, have high expectations, and, um, and I don't lower them, and so that's been sometimes an adjustment, and I'm a student-first type of person, which can be a little difficult sometimes, um, when you have a request, and, um, I put it through my filter and it doesn't work. Um, and so the first, the first semester, spent a lot of time of getting to know my staff and getting them to know that, um, I'm fair and I'm firm, and it's just like in a classroom. You can believe what I say and believe, you know, because I won't, I don't say anything that I'm not going to stand behind. And so I think that just takes time to figure out if she's really meaning that, and now they know. And so, um, I would say probably in the second weekend of December, we had a couple aha moments, and, um, it's been clicking. It has been, like I said, on Friday night, no joke, goosebumps in that, that school improvement, because it wasn't all the cheerleaders of, oh, on the gen team, super excited because, um, they want to spend Friday night with me. It was a wide variety of staff members that came together and had, um, former staff, new staff, that really just decided, this is good stuff. And so it's been a great two thousand and eighteen.
Just a question regarding your additional early releases. How have your staff and parents responded to those?
So we've only had two. Um, at this point, we have, um, a couple coming up. Um, our, our mission was to explain our, to our parents through our newsletters and such, as to why we were having them. Um, some of our parents who don't like any of the early outs, still don't like them. Um, but most of them said, oh yeah, I want my kid, you know, I mean, when we talked about writing, they want their teachers to be the best writing teachers that they can be. Um, they want teachers who are well-informed. I think our parents just wanted to know, what are we doing during those, those days? Uh, we offered all sorts of options because we took that funky one o'clock release time because of, um, the inability to work around the high school and middle school busing schedules, so we had to release a little bit early. And we offered different options for our parents to support them, and everyone's like, no, we got this. So we've had really positive response. Um, and the ability to do this with our staff has been amazing because it's time, um, I cannot imagine doing some of the work that we are asking our schools to do as we improve without that, that whole group time, or the ability to really dive deep. The twenty-five minute, twenty, which ends up being a twenty-minute staff meeting, is like, okay, let me fire something at you, and then we're off. You know, there's no time for dialogue, no time for discussion, no time for group, um, collaboration, and so it kind of slows you down and gets you to do really good work. And so I think it's essential.
I, I think similarly, I think, like, what a difference a year makes, really, um, Mrs. Squires had a chance to come in and rock the boat and, and help establish a direction, and, and that's what you're doing, uh, here, uh, just like when we set a strategic plan and make your, your vision and mission statements. I mean, this, this is, uh, common stuff, but it needs to be done, and sometimes it's overlooked in organizations, big and small, and so, um, I, I think it would appear that you're doing a really good job of laying that foundation. And so, I think it would appear that you're doing a really good job of laying that foundation. And like you said, there's, there's a, everybody wants to see where they can press their boundaries and, and what they need to do or want to do, but, but the good news is everybody wants to succeed too. So, once they figure out that, that you're establishing a good direction, they see it, then it'll all fall in.
That trust, and trust takes time.
Well, I'll say, Jennifer, welcome to life. Yeah, this is, but you, in many ways, you've had a very up and down year, for 12 months. But I think with the, with what you're doing, you're setting the framework and the structure in place. It's not demeaning anyone, it's just saying, in order to move for the sake of the kids, we have to look at ourselves and how we move forward. And I think, you're doing it, to me, you're doing it, that's the right way. With, I just want to go back, I mean, we got the S-Backs coming up, and have you taken that step of writing across the curriculum, that clarity of thought in what an S-Back response, and that kind of a writing skill to at least get the students saying, here's the question, and have them write a response, you know, actually do it. I mean, you probably have gone that way, but...
I can address that. Our third, fourth, and fifth grade have switched over to the MIU instruction, which is that measurable instructional unit where the majority of the teachers keep their own students, and they work on grade-level materials. So very similar to what Susan had said about exposure to, it's trying to make those grade-level texts accessible to all students, and to understand skills like highlighting and extraneous information, and, you know, what do you need in this key question? What is the, what is the meat of the question? And understanding our questions. And so, all of our questions have been redone. They all have been started over, of which they had not done up until January. So, in the past, they had worked with their, their materials and done their best with starting with what materials they had, but now they're really starting from scratch and working with everything that's based around our state standards. And that's something that hasn't maybe occurred as diligently in the past because it's just different programming. And so, from the perspective I have, having not been in elementary for a while, I've seen a rigor that, just in two weeks, has, has changed. And I've observed in every single classroom of our, of our special education classes that are both experiencing this, and the rigor in those classrooms is, is beautiful. You know, it's something that matches. And so when we talk about exposure and the ability to access those curriculum, it's a challenge, but it's so invigorating. And I think as the teachers are getting into those, every group was given the opportunity, and I had kindergarten, third, fourth, and fifth grade all change, which is an enormous amount of work, because we have brand-new math, we have a brand-new science, and now they have brand-new reading to take care of. So three new programs. And yet, they did it voluntarily because they knew it was good for kids. That's awesome, to me. And that, that exposure and that ability to write and the ability, and the high expectation that comes with that is, is just parallel, right, to the, the requirements of the Smarter Balance Assessment.
Okay, same question to you as, as to the Empire Group. Not next week, but the week after, may I stop by and take a look at what's going on in your classroom?
You can come by anytime you want.
Okay.
The door is always open.
Okay, thank you. Keep up the good work. While you're here, I'm going back...
You were this close.
You can't get away. But let's go back to your, your first presentation here. How's, how's your daughter doing?
She's doing very well. She's made some very good progress and is hoping to, to go back on the volleyball court in the next month.
We'll be out there watching. Okay, good, good.
Thank you for asking. Now I'm gonna cry. No, just kidding. Keep it together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could suggest a change in our agenda, I know our two high school principals are here looking at a late night and an early day tomorrow. Mrs. Kima has let me know that she'd be willing to put her presentation behind the principals if you're so inclined.
Okay, then we'll move right to agenda. Thank you all, as you leave. Let's go to Agenda Item Number 10, Presentation of Strategies and Support Mechanisms Intended to Help Prepare CCSD 11th Grade Students.
Come on, Steve. Help me out here.
Making sure I have...
All right, Agenda Item Number 10, Presentation of Strategies and Support Mechanisms Intended to Help Prepare CCSD 11th Grade Students to Take the ACT in the Spring of 2018. This is Tasha and Jason.
President Swarzak, do we need a motion to change that just because we'd already previously adopted the agenda, just to keep it clean?
Probably that would be appropriate.
I'll move that we go to Agenda Item 10 next.
Second.
Any discussion, any objections for the audience? See, is that a little bigger? All right, all right.
Good evening. I'm Tasha Huesa, principal at Carson High School. I have, I think they're trying to find our presentation. First and foremost, I just want to let you know, it's, it's gonna sound very familiar to what you heard last week, but I think it's very important for us to talk about the ACT and its origins, and what it entails, and our data before we get into the action steps that we're doing to help our students prepare for that coming up. So, if you will bear with me while we go through those steps.
While we're waiting, Tasha, you not feeling well? You look like you're a little bit... We'll be gentle.
Thank you.
Well, let me tell you, you know, you brought Thursday night, and, and you did an excellent, you made an excellent presentation. I, I know I told you there, and I think all of us agree that what you did, it was, is very professional and very well done. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
When is the ACT test?
Okay, so our students will be testing on February 27th, so that's coming up very soon. I, I guess I can actually, while they're doing that, I will just jump into some of the, the basics that we learned, I will tell you. This is gonna be our fourth year of administering the ACT to all of our 11th grade students. We are one of 17 states that census tests, which means we test 100% of our students. And, and the good part for that, being in our, going into our fourth year, is that we're learning a little bit more each and every year about what that means for our kids. I will tell you that, you know, as a principal, I didn't know a whole lot about the test, and then took it really to heart in the last couple of years to try to find out as much about the assessment, what it means for our students, what it entails, so that we could really come up with a comprehensive plan for attacking preparation for our students. So first and foremost, what I learned is that ACT, what they base their test on is a survey that they do of teachers nationally about every four to five years, and they call it the Future Survey of College and Career Ratingness Standards. So they do it K through 12, what is being taught across the country, across all grade levels. And the reason for that is although, for instance, in our state, we use the Nevada Academic Content Standards, which are aligned to the Common Core State Standards, right, or a version of that, not all states use that. So although the ACT is aligned to Common Core State Standards, it is not, it is not 100%, it's, it's not, one doesn't 100% represent the other, if that makes sense. So they are aligned, but there are things within the ACT assessment that are not taught within the Nevada Academic Content Standards. So that gave us the impetus to need to really take a look at, okay, well, what are they gonna assess our students on? One of the great useful tools that ACT provides is actually a breakdown of the standards, their career readiness standards, by scores that students would potentially earn if they know and can master these particular skills, like in mathematics across the board. So if you want to score, you know, high in math, you need to know these things. So one of the things that we've been doing with our implementation specialists, and we're just at the very beginning of that, is really taking a look at what are we missing within our curriculum currently? Now, that, that, that particular process takes a little bit of time to get both of those systems paired up together, and then to have assessments and curriculum that supports both of those. But that's one of the things that we've really learned as of recently, like in the last year, that we're really aspiring to, to try to, to marry those two things together for our students so that we can prepare them a little bit more effectively than what we have in the past. So I see our presentations up. So I will go through this very quickly, because again, it's information that, that you've heard before, but I think it's important for anyone who might be listening at home, that they understand in particular what, what an ACT score means for their students. So ACT has set benchmark scores in all, all four areas, English, algebra, social studies and biology, actually, the test is English, mathematics, reading, and science. But those college courses are what they align to. And you can see the benchmark scores there, it's an 18 in English, 22 for math, 22 for reading, and a 23 for science. And what that means is, based on ACT's research, they, they know that a student achieving that level on the ACT assessment has a 50% chance of earning a B in that college course when they go their freshman year, or 75% chance of having a C. So that's where they came up with those benchmark scores. It's important to note that those benchmark scores, that's what they mean. It's not what an average student in the state or in the country earns. It's what they're saying they've done research on, that if they hit this score, they have this chance of being successful at this level in college-level courses in their first year. That being said, it's very important for our students, and one of the things that we're trying to do, I know Mr. Zona will join me in this course of action with our kids, but it's important that the kids themselves understand what the ACT scores mean for them. And a good portion of our students, over 50% of our students at Carson High in particular, do go on to post-secondary education, whether it's to WNC, UNR, TMCC, or sometimes at a state colleges. More than half of our students do go. So, these become very important for them. And you can see the placement scores there, this is specifically for the Nevada Systems of Higher Education, so any college within, within the state of Nevada, state college. So for our students to be able to take a college credit-earning course without, without having to pay for remediation, in English, they have to get at least an 18. But at UNR in particular, an 18 only gets them to an English 100J course. The important thing to know about that is although it does fulfill the English 101 credit, it's actually like a five-credit course that they're taking to, to fulfill a three-credit, what could have been a three-credit course. So, it costs more money, so we don't want, we, we want to look beyond that for our kids and, and aim for that 21, because a 21, then we'll get them into an English 101 class, which is, which is the entry-level English class in a requirement for all degree programs. And then the same goes for that math next to it. And that gives you the score breakdown. But once again, our students are aiming for at least a 22, which gets them into Math 120 or 126, and depending on your degree program, that's the entry-level math course that you want to take. So, it's important for them, based on that, if they don't get a high enough ACT score, for instance, in their junior year, our counselors work with them to really encourage them to take that ACT or the SAT again later on in their junior year, or again in their senior year. So, that's one reason it's very important. The other reason is in the Nevada, University of Nevada Reno, it actually equates to scholarships. So this was something that I've shared with everyone as a parent, I didn't really know this, and my daughter was, was one of them that, that scored in that gray area there, was nice. She got a $2,500 scholarship her freshman year, but it's a one-time scholarship, it's 1,250 a semester. And if you get over that navy blue area, it's an $8,000 a year, for four-year scholarship for $32,000. Big difference. The thing that I want our parents and our students to take away from that is you do have to submit your ACT score before December or before winter break. So in my case, we didn't sign up for that second retake of ACT until January, and I was like, ah, like, I should know that, I'm the principal of the high school, I should know that. But we hadn't done a really good job of getting that information out to our families and to our students. So, again, it, it translates directly into money for families, and that's an important thing. Okay, so ACT scores for our district. This shows 2015 and 2016 scores, comparing the district to the national and to Nevada. Again, I want to reiterate on this, it's very difficult, because a lot of times when they put scores out in the newspaper, when they compare us, they're using these national scores. What those national scores are, are scores for the graduating class of, which means seniors across the country, not juniors. It's not a comparative score. So our kids, and in our state, we don't, not that we don't have room to grow, we do, but it's not as much of a gap as it usually gets portrayed in the news. So, this is not only seniors that they're testing or comparing us against, but it, it represents about 64% of seniors nationally. Because if you remember, I told you that we're one of 17 states that does census testing. The rest of the states don't test census testing. And four years ago, prior to the state of Nevada bringing on AC testing for all juniors, in Carson City, our students, when you compare them to these national scores, actually met and mostly outscored the national scores. So, it, it's been kind of a, a hard pill to swallow, if you will, to go from being definitely above the state, and in most cases, competitive with the national, and often above the national level for AT, to all of a sudden being, whoo, down at the bottom of the pack, right? But, that is, that is unfortunately where we are. We can see that we, in all areas of the composite, English, math, reading, and science, we do outscore our state slightly, but we are still behind the national. And, and this next one is 2017. What I did is I took all of the census, 17 census states, and came up with their average score. So that's really what you're looking at, and I, I think for me, the most meaningful benchmark for us to, to really aspire to hit. So Carson City School District is in the, the very left-hand column, the blue, and in the orange right next to it is what the average of those 17 census states have. So again, you can see, we're not, we're not there yet, we're not hitting the mark, and we have, we need to grow, and we have to have a strategic plan for doing that. So, and, and again, in all areas, we're, we're behind, but we're actually doing significantly better in math and science than we are in reading and English. Not surprising, we believe that's, that's because we do have such high English language learning population, and they don't struggle as much in math and science, the language is not the barrier, as much of a barrier in math and science as it is with reading in English. So I, I think that's why we see that, those two being a little bit even further behind in math and science. But, more importantly, to get to what we're doing about that right now, is our English department in all junior-level English classes, they are working with our students to create Open Ed accounts. ACT recently acquired Open Ed. Open Ed is a warehouse, if you will, for educational, online educational resources. So they have made it free to all, to all students, and students, what we're doing in English is we're helping the students create their accounts, and then getting them used to accessing that program, so they can take a practice ACT test in there. And then what it does is if you get a, if you get a question wrong, it then sends you to the best resources that they have for prepping you for that, things from Khan Academy and other big-name resources, educational resources, and you can practice that. And then it, it gives you many different tutorials, so then the student can go back and practice another question. Today, I actually was reading some updates, excuse me, reading some updates from ACT that they have, actually, they will be launching a new ACT prep resource for our students in late spring that I'm super excited about, that is a little bit more focused or formulated than Open Ed is. Open Ed is good, they have, they have one that you can pay for, which then you can get really into the building individual plans for kids. Well, now, they will be rolling out later this spring where they've changed the name of it... it. I can't remember it off the top of my head, because I was literally reading it right before I came here, but that our kids will be able to have access to. So I think there's a lot of promise in what that can do for our kids. The other thing is, is we provide our students information on how to access Learning Express. That's another online resource that's done through our library system. Ananda Campbell does an excellent job of providing that, getting information out to kids. And then, again, in our junior English classes, they are doing opener ACT activities with the students. We are particularly focusing on the multiple-choice part of the English test. This is one thing our teachers recently found out, is that although our students take the writing portion, where you're actually writing, you know, an essay, the bigger part of the scoring, and actually the scoring that they get back is on the multiple-choice part. So we had to refocus some of our efforts there, because we were going to work on the actual essay-writing piece, and then realized that's not what's getting reported for them. So, and then other departments, our social studies all year long, and social studies have been refocusing their curriculum to incorporate reading comprehension tasks. So in the reading portion of the ACT, they use that as a predictor for social science classes at the college level. So, and it's really reading informational texts and being able to decipher and answer questions related to that text. So in our social studies courses, they've already actually got a jump start on integrating those changes in the curriculum, as they've been mapping the new standards for this, during this course of this year. And then, the guidance counselors are providing additional support to our English classes with that Open Ed resource. And in math, our implementation specialist, Sarah Lobzinger, as I know you all know Sarah, she went through those standards again and found several different topics that we were not teaching currently, that are not in the Nevada academic content standards. And she created opener activities for all of our math teachers to incorporate, just to kind of go over some of these things that our kids haven't been exposed to. So at least they, until we get fully integrated into our curriculum, at least they're getting an opportunity to get prepped for those. And then, we're doing the same thing in science. And then you heard from Mr. Cassiopo that we are starting our after-school boot camp. And in essence, really what that is, is we're just giving the kids an opportunity to come in with their friends in the library, have a teacher there to help support them, utilizing, again, that Open Ed resource, because when you actually get down to it, the different types of tutorials that are provided in there are much better than we can do on a teacher-driven basis, so that students can work where they need to shore up their own skills, versus trying to group them and give them, you know, an overview of, here, maybe you need this. It can be really targeted to their individual needs. So that's what we're doing this month, and then one to two weeks before the test. What we have is a presentation that goes out to all of the classes from the counselors. Mandy Chambers did a phenomenal job. She does a voiceover of it, but really trying to hammer home for the kids. Again, this means money for you kiddos. We know that most of you go to college. Here's how it's going to help you out. Here's what it means for you. Here's the timelines, et cetera. Here's some more resources for you. And the other thing is, again, really building up the importance in our school environment to get the kids jazzed for taking it. I think one of the things that our kids have really struggled with in the past three years is that Western Nevada in particular, and the lion's share of our kids go to Western Nevada when they leave us, they don't require an ACT score. We have a wonderful partnership with them, but because of that, they take our students, they know that our students, if they take Algebra II in our district and score a C or better in that course, they know that they're prepared for their Math 126 class, so they don't require the kids to have an ACT score or take an Accuplacer. Again, they've also partnered with us to allow us to do the Math 095 and the English 095, 098 classes. And if our students get Cs or better in theirs, they don't make them take the Accuplacer. So our kids know that, and they know they don't have to take the Accuplacer or necessarily have that ACT score because of that partnership. But we still, again, have to get around to, well, kiddo, you might go, you know, to UNR beyond that. You might do your first year or whatever at WNC, but what are your plans beyond that? And so this is still important to you, and really try to get them to buy into that process. So the intent is really to try to build that up in our school. And then the other thing is, again, to get all the information out to our parents, because I still don't think parents in our community, well, in our country, actually, understand exactly what those tests are and what it means. Again, as the principal of the school, you would have thought I knew my kid had to take that test before winter break. And I didn't. I just, I'm sure it was said to me, but, you know, it just, it got by us. And so it means, it's important, and it means a big difference to kids. So we want to make sure we keep hammering that home and getting that message out the best that we can. And then the long-term planning, what we're continuing to do, like I said, is really making sure that we have integrated all of those college and career readiness standards. That's the work, the heavy lifting that has to be done. And then, and actually paralleling some of our assessments and the way we write assessments to get our kids prepared for that. Because again, the kids came out and they said, you know, they asked questions in a really weird way. They're like, we're just not even used to the way they word it, what they're asking. And so giving our teachers the ability to look at those practice tests to figure out how we're trying to get information from kids, so that we prep them for that. And then, the very last thing is really looking at, hopefully being able to administer the pre-ACT to all of our 10th graders. So that, the powerful thing about that is if we can administer the pre-ACT to them, and we get that practice score, then the way we can actually individualize their prep plans is down to the minute details. I mean, instead of having to take another practice test and practice questions, we can actually plug those scores right in for them, and it prescribes them a plan that teachers then can actually integrate into their classroom instruction as like homework assignments and, you know, opening activities, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of potential there. So we're hoping we can get that going. And we have some really good leads on some folks in the community that have offered to help us out, that hopefully Sue and I will be meeting with in the near future, financially, I mean, even making a commitment to do that. So hopefully, we'll have good news for you in the future about some of that coming forward. So currently, that's our plan. I know Jason has a few other things with, oh, yeah, okay.
(laughter)
Specific to Pioneer, but if you have any...
Tasha, how many juniors are going to be taking the test?
So we have, well, you know, it kind of changes every day, but we have right around 500, 512 students in that ballpark.
All right. And you just said, it's, you know, one of the, you said, well, at the last meeting, and you've said it before, it's a timed test, which some of our students may not, you know, be prepared for. And understanding the question, you said it's, they don't understand how it's worded or whatever. What are we doing specifically to address those two? And were we monitor the kids, but we, whether it's in English or in math, we go and say, all right, it's timed. So you have to go directly and understand what's even being asked. Is somebody specifically with each of the 500 kids saying, here is how you would approach taking this test? I mean, this is life. So...
So, yes and no. So to the answer to that question, do we have practice tests that are being given in the classroom? No, we don't. Are our teachers doing test-question prep with the students, as in, here is a practice question from this test. Let's decipher what this question is asking, and how do you approach this? Yes, that piece is going on within those English classrooms. In terms of the long-term planning, that's what I meant by actually bringing back, and I have to say this, bringing back the timed test, because through our process from Race to the Top, and really trying to focus on being learner-centered, we have really gotten far, 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 far away from saying to kids, here you go, here's 35 problems. Do these in 45 minutes. We don't do that with our kids anymore. But the hardship to that is, okay, well, we have an ACT test that you have to take. It might be the only test in your life that you have to take in 45 minutes and do 35 problems, but it is what it is. So we need to get you exposed to that kind of thing. So, I mean, obviously, within, like, we do a really good job of this within our AP classes, because AP tests are timed. And what our AP teachers do is they practice that test format. You never want to say you're teaching to the test, but you do have to teach the test format. So we do a good job of that in our AP tests, our AP classes, and we've proven that that's been successful, as we shared with you last Thursday, in terms of our AP results. So I know we're going to have to do that. And again, that's on that long-term planning part. But we also want to make it meaningful for kids. So you're not necessarily wanting to take a test and go, hey, we haven't done this all year, but let me slap this test in front of you, and I'm going to give you only 35 minutes to do it this time, right? Like, that wouldn't make sense. So we need to be strategic about that.
We do. And this may be the only time in our high school setting in taking, you know, an exam with a time. But in life, when you go to work for somebody, there's time limits. And this is still another life thing for kids to succeed. We have the opportunity to prepare them for that. The top 10 to 20% of the kids, we probably don't. They could teach us and do it, but...
I'll tell you, actually, Mr. Sizer, I'm sorry to cut you off, but our super smarties are the ones that came out and said, I really struggled with that, and I don't think I did as well as I could have, because I spent half an hour on the first 10 problems, because I knew I could think them through, or I could figure them out. Just given enough time, I could come up with a strategy to attack this, versus my strategy is, if I don't know the answer to this one within the first 30 seconds of looking at it, I need to skip to the next one and hope I find one I know how to do quickly. Then I go back, and then I tried it. So, you know what I mean? So it literally was our very high-functioning AP honors-level students who went, wow, you know, I'm not used to having to take it under this kind of a time pressure.
Good information, then. We can use it. We've got a month to get these kids ready. So you've got five... So Jason, the same question to you. What are you doing? Are you doing the same thing at Pioneer?
Yes.
How many juniors do you have?
Okay. Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. Before I get to that, I'd like to just kind of set up what we're doing different this year. Really, the last couple years, we spent a month before the test preparing. We realized that wasn't cutting it. So with our new schedule, with our built-in time, we were doing weekly practice. We started that in October, and we do that in our online courses. So basically, it's not taking away any time from the core content. And before I forget, I really want to thank Tasha for her leadership and going and being on this ACT committee, bringing that back to the Carson City School District. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that. So we've worked on logistics at Pioneer, and we've learned that when we have a captive audience, we get things done. We can't rely on the after-school programs. So our kids are going to get this practice every week, 45 minutes to 60 minutes, based on the length of the test, in an online course. And so the next step is, as Tasha was talking about, that integration into core content, we're also hitting it on this end as well. That's just a format that's worked well with our interventions. We've tried after-school things in the past at our site, and we don't get a lot of participation. So when we have them during the day, we're going to use that. And that's kind of why we put 20 more minutes into the schedule two years ago, and we're starting to see the benefits of that. There's been a lot of work done with the ISs and all that with the teachers. We appreciate all that. I want to thank also Shannon Archer. She's our online lab person, and she's making sure that's getting done. So for accountability, she makes sure that's getting done on a weekly basis, and then I'm kind of looking into, you know, what's being done as well. And that started in October, so we're hoping to see the benefits of that this year. So did that answer any of your questions?
Yes, it does. I mean, you've got a structure, okay, you started in October, you've got a structure, you know, to help these kids, but you've got a way of accountability. Somebody is monitoring to make sure they're doing it, but it's giving these kids a chance.
It's about routine, too. And, you know, when we first had the ACT for everybody, we had kids walk out. And we learned that we really had to work on the attitudes of the parents and the kids, and show them all the reasons she showed you of why it's important, even though they may not want to go to UNR or other places. It is very important. So we stress that. And I can get, at a small school, I can get to every class in 30 minutes and talk to them face-to-face, which is beautiful. You know, it's not on the intercom. And so you really need that at a site like ours. And so we have that ability to do that. So I really, again, appreciate all the work that's been done by Tasha and her group. Our teachers work together, so that translates to both sites. But we have to hit things a little differently at times, and that's kind of why we built it in to the weekly sessions.
Good for you.
But it's about routine, and their understanding, the routine now. I don't get the pushback like we used to. So...
So, Tasha, I have a question for you about, you talked about with the practice ACT and then teachers being able to use that for instructional practices. Do you know, or do you have any data of how many places, states, districts are actually using a program and how it's affected their scores?
I don't, and I wouldn't say that many right now, because ACT just acquired Open Ed. So it was a recent purchase. I do know that, in the data that I've looked at, that out of the 17 states, the census states, those states that do the best, have the best scores, actually utilize the entire ACT suite of assessments that, for instance, would have replaced in our state the SBAK. So ACT has a whole, what they call a suite of assessments that goes all the way up. So, which made sense to me, if you're using an aligned assessment system, K through 12, and all of those pieces come together. I don't know why our state didn't do that. I wasn't on that committee or privy to the information, but that is the one common theme that I saw, is I'm like, wow, you know, every one of you are using that aligned system. So that's neither here nor there, just an observation. But for us, like I said, I'm thinking we're probably going to be one of the fastest states to utilize Open Ed in such an in-depth way, simply because, again, it's so new to ACT.
I just want to say, thanks for your leadership on that, because it's a really confusing thing for students and families and even teachers. And so having administrators that really have a deep understanding and are able to kind of not only inform parents, but community and the board, that's, you know, it's a huge benefit. So thanks for your work on that research.
Thank you, Justice Walker. I just have a question regarding the timed test, and I'm wondering, for our SBAKs and, of course, tests, or any of the MAPS testing, are those online tests, are the students able to skip questions and then come back to them? Or are we teaching them to take tests where they answer every question rather than pacing, I guess, is what I'm wondering?
So I am not the best person to ask about MAPS. I don't believe you can skip a test in MAPS, or skip a question and go back, because I think that's, right, as you answer each question, it recalibrates to where you are. With the end-of-course assessments, when they were done of course paper and pencil, they could go and jump all over it. But if you do it electronic, I think it's kind of, you do it and you move on. And if there is a function to be able to go back and check, I don't know that we've actually gone through those steps with our students to say, skip this, move on, go back. So that is a good question, a good observation. Absolutely. I will tell you, one of the other things that I'm really excited about, that I think we should investigate, and my two vice principals who are in charge of testing would be like, Tasha, do not say this. But what I really want to do with our kids, hopefully next year, not this year, because they would literally come down here and string me up, is do the online version of the writing portion of the ACT. I think I shared that a little bit, but I spoke to one of the principals in Las Vegas who had the greatest growth for his school, and they said they did absolutely nothing else but switch from the paper and pencil writing test to the online writing test. And he said he truly, truly, truly believed that the reason why the kids did so much better, and it was, it was, it wasn't one of those press releases from the Department of Ed, but, I mean, so it was an impressive gain. He contributed to, our kids do not handwrite anything nowadays. They type everything, even when they're in class, on their, everything. So just the way that their brains work, when it comes to laying out a paper, and then being able to copy, paste, you know, move things around versus trying to write and scribble out sentences and then do whatever they do on paper, it just doesn't mesh for them. So he said, literally, with no other prep at all, that, and then they got in the newspaper and got in, you know, had an award for having the highest jump in scores. And he said, well, what we did was the online one. So with us, the reason why I'm saying my vice principals would keep scowling at me, is they're like, Tash, until we're really confident that we're not going to run into the issues that we had with, and of course, when we did online, Mr. Cassiopo, you and I had a conversation about that, for instance, that very day. You know, we had some challenges. So we're like once bitten, twice shy about trying to dive into online assessments when it's not a requirement, just not wanting to put our kids in a situation where until it's tried and true and pretty solid for them, we didn't want to do it. But, and in his particular case, at his school, he was able to hardwire all of his kids. So they were taking it in on desktop computers, not laptops. So in our case, we would have to be testing our students on their Chromebooks. That's, again, why we're kind of shy. We don't have enough computer labs to hardwire the kids. We don't have enough computer labs to hardwire the kids, what they call hardwire the kids to take the assessment. So, again, we're trying to work that through, but, I mean, it makes complete and total sense, right? Our kids are just not used to doing that pencil and paper anymore.
But like, okay, let's go back. Just one last question. Jason's got a way of monitoring that every student that, you know, it's not 500, so, but in the online, he monitors that they have actually done it. They've been exposed to it and we can track it. Are your two vice principals going to be, it's not like it's all scattered, we're hoping that everybody gets it, but how do we ensure that every student at least has some guidance in this? And the ACT, not only the importance, because we're testing to standards for college and career readiness.
So my English teachers, I said on the last slide, junior English teachers, as part of instruction in their classrooms, are creating those accounts with the students and they are having the students work within that program within their classroom. Is that what you're asking me? Or are you wanting something beyond that?
No, that's the basic part, that you, as a principal, you know that all 500 of the class or whatever have been given guidance in the ACT.
I know as the principal that every junior English teacher on my classroom has been given the direction and the tools to implement in their classroom, that program. Can I look on OpenEd and look at all 500 juniors and see exactly where they're at and what they've done? No, I can't do that.
Do your two vice principals, you said they're involved in this track at all?
Her English teachers that are doing it.
Yeah, I know, but you made mention of the two vice-
Well, Mr. Swerzer, why don't you tell me what you want them to do and then maybe we can come up with a plan for that.
That, you know, they've been given guidance and there's some evidence that they've done this.
Other than them telling me that they've complied with my direction? I mean...
I think you've answered it. I don't think he understands. You're doing the English teachers and putting that responsibility on them where, because it's such a larger school where Jason can do it the way he's doing it. And so he's just making that qualification that that's exactly what you're doing.
And classroom observation, junior administrators observe classrooms and can watch teachers implement your direction.
Absolutely. And if they weren't and somebody knows that they're not doing what they've been asked to do, then I would ask them to let me know and I'd have that conversation with that individual teacher. But the expectation has been put forward. They spent their early release time this past Monday doing their planning and they have their documents and they had their plan going forth. So I think at some point in time, I do have to trust that they'll do what they say they're going to do.
Just a comment. First of all, yeah, I think the high school, Carson High School, there's a challenge with having to get to 500-plus kids versus, you know, what Jason's doing at Pioneer. I think Pioneer has its own challenges and I think the way the two of you are trying to approach this is admirable. This is, it's a challenge and it's trying to convince kids, it's trying to give the kids tools to be successful on a specific test. That is a high-stakes, important test. But I think the key here, and I forget which one of you said it, is making the kids understand why it's important and that it is important. I mean, it's one thing to push strategies on kids, but if they don't understand why you're pushing this on them, your efforts are going to not go as long as you think they're going to go. So I liked hearing that, you know, you're trying to make these kids understand why it's important to them. You know, what their goals are now may not be what their goals are a year from now or five years from now or tomorrow for that matter. So I always try to tell my kids, you know, be prepared, you know, have all the tools in your toolcase in case you change your mind down the road. So I think you're on the right track. It's a challenging test. So anyway, thank you.
You know, as a board, I guess, one of the things that I think is we set policy and then we're expecting Mr. Stokes and Mrs. Kima to make sure that's happening with our principals. And so it's really hard for us as a board to ask them to justify how they're doing their observations and their walkthroughs because it's complicated at a different, a lot of different sites. And so I think we have to remember that sometimes we're putting them on the spot even if we're not meaning to and maybe those are questions that should be directed towards the superintendent and kind of letting them follow up with that is my personal opinion.
Any other questions, comments? Jason, thank you so very much.
Mr. Swerzer, it's like you want to visit schools. I welcome you to come out to Carson High and I will walk you around to English classrooms and you and I can observe them together. How's that? You got it.
Presentation on the State Board of Education approved college and career-ready high school diploma criteria and requisite endorsements to include an update on the proposed Nevada standard high school diploma requirement per Nevada Administrative Code, NAC Chapter 389. For discussion only. Susan?
Susan Kima for the record. I'm sharing with you tonight changes that are coming our way from the State Board of Education regarding changes in our requirements for the standard diploma as well as the advanced diploma. Not everything that I'm showing you tonight is already set in stone, but I feel that since those changes have been starting to be widely discussed, that it was important to make sure that we start our communication plan tonight with you, the board. What you will find is that as we go through this process, as the state goes through their process of adopting new standards for the diplomas types, we will be bringing back to you in March a board policy, making changes to our own diplomas here in Carson City. I have with me tonight a special guest is Mr. David Carter. He's a state board member who served on the high school graduation committee and may be able to provide some remarks. Do you want to just start us off about this? Okay. All right. And he's also here once I get going with the presentation if you have any questions.
And David Carter, a member of the State Board of Education, District 2. First, the process of looking at the diplomas actually started with the previous board. I was elected in 2016 and started serving in early 2017. And it was really revised by legislation that was passed and signed during the 2017 session. And so much of the administrative work that we have been working on is a result of that Public hearings have been held. They've had a lot of district superintendent input. And of course, as with all items that come before us as a board to be voted on, it has been reviewed by LCB for language and ensuring everything's on the legal up and up. Basically, the biggest thing is that we are getting rid of the advanced diploma. Basically, there will be four types of diplomas. There will be a college-ready and career-ready diploma. There will be a college-ready diploma, a career-ready diploma, and a standard diploma. The first three, we are pretty much close to the final regulations. We did vote on most of that in the January board meeting. The standard diploma will be presenting in March 2018 board meeting for final approval because we don't meet in February. We only meet nine times a year. Also, one thing to note is that junior ROTC was added as an approved career-ready option, which before it had technically not been on the approved list. And so now it is going to be allowed for the standard diploma. The idea behind all of these was with, first with the career and college-ready, that would mean that they could either go into a career or with college. And they have actually done pretty much what amounts to the advanced or even more than the advanced diploma. And then you have those who have decided to go just career and going through a technical evaluation. And with the, as you see with the guidelines that are shown, they have to receive certification from the career field that they are planning to go into, some kind of certification testing there. And of course, with the college-ready, it's preparing them for the university level rather than just a community college level so that they can be proficient enough that they don't have to take, as was discussed earlier, the, what we used to call in my day, the bonehead classes, bonehead English and math. And so the idea is that they're ready to start immediately on seeking their college diploma and being able to be successful. That was pretty much what I had, unless you have some questions. I can go into further detail. I didn't want to go into a lot of detail tonight unless you had questions regarding certain items.
Questions?
I'll be going over the detail with you just to make sure we understand each of the components. But do you have any other questions for Mr. Carter at this point? Okay, thank you. So you have in your board packet a page from our Regulation 517. We're going to reference that in the end. So we're not referencing that in the beginning, but we'll reference that in the end. And I'm going to break this down. We're going to, I'll talk to you first about the standard high school diploma and then we'll talk about the advanced diploma. And then we'll go back to this page from our board policy and what's been done with our district thus far. So if you pull out, I don't have a PowerPoint tonight. I thought it was just important that we go through the document together. So if you pull out the standard high school diploma schematic, as Mr. Carter said, this has draft on it because it's had a workshop in January 12th. It's going towards a public hearing for state board approval in March, March 15th. So it's got draft on it. You can see the current Nevada standard high school diploma has 22 and 1/2 credits, 15 are required and 7 and 1/2 are for electives. Then I put, so that you could compare, the Carson City School District's standard diploma, which has higher requirements than the state. The last time teachers and I came before you for increasing our graduation requirements, we added the science, the extra science course and the extra math course. So our students have to take four math courses and the state, the current state standard diploma, they only have to take three. Our students have to take three science classes. The current state diploma only requires two. And part of that was a remediation strategy so that we could reduce our remediation, students who needed remediation when they went on to higher ed institutions. And we also listed that last week as one of our reasons that we believe our Millennium Scholarship winners went up because that's a requirement of the Millennium Scholarship. So that's the difference at this point. Once the state makes their changes on the college and career-ready diploma and the highest standard high school diploma, the administrators and I will meet and we'll talk about if we're going to keep our standards or if there's something that we're going to modify. If you go onto the next page, you will see the new Nevada proposed standard high school The proposal on the table at this point says on your, in your handout that it's for the cohort of 2000, the graduation cohort of 2022. But I can tell you that when it gets to the State Board of Education, the proposal on the table is for the graduation cohort of 2023 to give districts more time. Because if the state's not approving this till even March and then the LCB needs to take a look at it, then a state memo has to come out, we're not going to be ready for this, all the registration processes that have to start with our eighth graders in like February or March. If you notice, the new Nevada high school diploma is going to require 17 credits, which is two more than the current Nevada diploma and six units of elective credits. And that's 1 and 1/2 less electives compared to what's being offered now. The difference, the courses are the same with the exception of the college and career flex credit. And what they're saying is that students could take one of those options that are in that paragraph right below. So they could take a second year of CTE as a concentrator course. They could take a third year of CTE. They could take another math, a fourth year of math. They could take a third year of math, which we've already got, you know, in our graduation requirements. Or they could take a third year of social studies. They could also, if you look a little further, that computer science option can also count as the fourth unit of math or science. So just so you know, that I did meet last week with our middle school counselors and our middle school administrators and our high school counselors and our high school administrators to talk about what do we need to do with these changes that are coming? What systems do we need to change? Like, for example, with Infinite Campus, we need to go back into that system, rework our transcript. I don't want to be putting stickers on people's diplomas. I want IC to be able to stamp it for us. And Washel's working through that. I'm hoping to jump on with using their expertise. Just a side note, as far as changes, we do offer computer science at the high school. We offer it on Carson Online, but we also offer it with Mrs. Sherry, with Sherry Kelly at the Carson High School. And then next year, we're going to offer a second-level computer science course. And then the other change, that's a side note, that's not part of the diploma but a different legislative act, is that under American Government, starting next fall, instead of a full year of American Government, we're going to have a half a credit of American Government and then the students will take a half a credit of econ. And in that econ class, they'll have their financial literacy. And that is, I think, most of our, most of the, even though we have a little time to implement that, most of the districts are going to implement it next year because we're working on curriculum revisions. So this last page talks about what's different between the high school standard diploma and the college and career-ready diploma. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that because I think it would make more sense after I went through the college and career-ready diploma. It's basically saying that the college and career-ready diploma is more rigorous. It's requiring evidence-based assessments such as a certain score on the ACT or SAT that the standard diploma doesn't require. It expects that in the advanced diploma that you have a certain GPA. So there's some more rigorous requirements to that. So just know that this one is a stay tuned. The state board has not yet approved it, but if you have any questions or feedback, now's the time to give that to me. So when we do go, the state, the committee, high school graduation committee does go before the state board for public hearing and a possible approval, I could provide public comment on your behalf. Do we have any questions on this one before I move on? Okay?
I mean, what trustee Cassiopeo and I are saying is, we don't seem, it doesn't seem that this is going to be a big change for what we're already doing, just a few little tweaks, correct?
Right. We're, it's, I think what's important is that we make sure that our staff is well-versed on the changes so that when they're counseling students and moving them from the middle school to the high school, we always start our new cohorts with that ninth grade that everybody's communicated with and the parents, too. Because they might have a student who graduated last year who's now got a sibling sitting in seventh grade and the requirements will be different. We just want- We just want to make sure. So we know we're going to involve our public information officer. We, we've got our whole list of things that need to be changed and behind the scenes work so that when it's, when the state board approves this, we're ready to, ready to go and to go live with our communications and newspaper and Facebook and all of that.
If I can make a comment on that too. There were the two biggest differences that we as a state board have been working on is to increase the rigor for the standard diploma, to have it comparable with other states as far as the rigor because there was some concern that it wasn't as, as difficult. And the other was making the career ready diploma equal to the college ready so that it would be recognized so that if students decided to go that vehicle rather than college, they'd have a certi, more than just a certificate. In essence, many of, many other states had more rigorous requirements in the career ready. And as we're finding, so many students are deciding to go to career rather than college, we want it to be equal at least, if not better than the other states. And so we are increasing the rigor on the career ready side. And I think those are the two biggest differences between what we have now versus what is going on. And that's not to say that Carson High was not already there. It's trying to make the whole state comparable.
All right. Moving on to the advanced high school diploma. The state has currently this advanced high school diploma. The state board has approved a name change to the college and career ready high school diploma. And before you, you have the schematic there for the, for, for the, and can compare between the current advanced high school diploma and then our advanced diploma. And if you look at the, at the Nevada college and career ready high school diploma, that replaces, as I said, the advanced diploma. It was state board approved in December. It is the college and career ready high school diploma with endorsement. You can have a college and career ready high school diploma with a college endorsement, a career endorsement, or a college and career endorsement on your, on your, on your diploma. So you can see, you know, I'm looking at Laurel here, there's, there's communication that needs to be developed to go along with this so that people understand the difference. If we're waiting for a memo from NDE and for LCB to do their magic and then a memo from the Nevada Department of Education, and then once we receive that memo, districts can implement this as early as next year. And when we met, Mr. Stokes and I met with our team of administrators and counselors, the determination was is that if the state can come out with everything by March 1st, then we would be able to be ready to go to communicate. Otherwise, it's, you know, we've got this other ball rolling. It would be just too late to, to make a switch for our families. We would roll it out the following year.
I'm fairly certain nobody in this room even thought up this, but can you explain to me why this is important to have these distinctions? Like what does it matter? Why, if I'm a student in high school right now, why do I care to do anything but get a standard diploma?
Well, the, the AP, this college and career ready diploma puts you in line with Millennium Scholarship.
You mean as far as collecting the correct credits and stuff, right?
Meaning the criteria.
But I could do that even without this diploma offering, right?
So you could fall somewhere between the standard diploma and the college and career. You could take all the coursework for the college and career ready diploma but not meet the assessment requirements and therefore you wouldn't receive that diploma. You would receive a standard diploma. Would that put you in line for the Millennium, Millennium Scholarship? Not necessarily because you wouldn't have the score on the ACT that you would need. So this is what's, what's driving that. As Mr. Carter said, nationally, the requirements in Nevada were not as rigorous for high school diplomas as many other states.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out in my head is just, because it feels to me like we just added layers to stuff. If we wanted to increase the standards, then we should have increased the standards. Are we trying to not assault our graduation rates so much so we left a lower standard, but we were trying to up the level for some kids? Because otherwise, I could still just go to college and go to life. This won't affect how people get hired into jobs and stuff, am I right?
Well, that's, I don't think, based on what I'm hearing in those public workshops, that's not the intent of the committee. I think that, that what I'm hearing is that they're hoping that business and industry is going to recognize a, a career diploma from a high school entity or institution as something that is valuable because they've got some industry standards. These students have taken a, a test that has, in, in the career readiness part, as if I go through that with you, certain level of tests, the ASVAB, the NCRC, the CTE tasks, these certifications and like automotive or, or in manufacturing, they're industry recognized. And if students can leave high school with them, they can go right into a well, better paying job in business and industry.
So would it be, I, I mean, the way I see it is they're trying to work on that career pipeline. So we have all these industries coming into the state and technology and so they want to have a population that's well-educated for those jobs.
And they're discussing what's, what's going to be accepted. We're not, you know, we're necessarily, what is going to be accepted? And so this is an agreement with that, I believe, the committee, business and industry and higher ed that says, we're willing to accept students coming out of high school with these scores in order to be eligible for these scholarships, not remediation, et cetera, et cetera.
While we got Mr. Carter here, I guess, because he's maybe the one in the room.
Just before I'm.
Yeah, let me add in something real quick though. What I'm getting at, so like what you, I got friends that work out in the industrial park out there and at Tesla and stuff. They're just like the people who aren't on drugs and who graduated from high school. This is all nice, but I mean, that's, that's literally where we're still at in this state. Having goals is good, but I'm just venting here. To me, we just added a whole bunch of work for our people to differentiate this stuff and, and we, we, we could have just still had a high school diploma.
Well, I think the idea was not to be starting at Tesla at minimum wage or whatever they start at, but to be able to get into a level that would be close to, if not at, equivalent to a journeyman so that you've, you've gained the experience so that you can actually start earlier rather than having to go through an apprentice program so that much of the career prep would take place as a high school student rather than once you've graduated high school, you start on a one, two, three-year apprentice program. Now you're 18, you have that. And so you're in essence able to compete at, for a journeyman's wages, which are quite a bit more than an apprentice would be making. And so I think that's the difference. You could still graduate with a standard. You'd be able to go almost anywhere and even Tesla and some of those other places. But to be able to move up higher, start higher, we're, that's why we're going through the certification. That's why you, it mentions the various certification, nationally recognized certification levels that are equivalent to the ACT for college prep. And gaining those certifications actually is, is as recognized as the ACT.
I think, I think that's all nice in theory, but in my personal opinion, you could take it back to the board that you're wasting our people's time because the, our workforce is not, they ain't paying people different if they got career and college ready on their diploma or not. They're starting them out, they want a job and they're starting them at the bottom. And that's just the way the real world works when you get your first job, so.
And you know, one of the things trustee Green, I just want to point out is, I kind of chuckled to trustee Cassiope because when we were in high school, you either got your high school diploma or you didn't. There weren't these options. But I think that this kind of speaks to how education has changed. And so when you do go into an elementary classroom, what you're going to see kids in kindergarten doing are probably going to look like things we were doing in second and third grade sometimes. And I think that translates all the way up. And so as the expectations in all levels of our education are changing, I think that this is one way to also reward those students that are going above and beyond and really taking those more rigorous classes because they have an interest in something. And it's, it's just an, an added opportunity. Now, is it, are we going to push every single kid into that track? No, but for some kids, you know, it's going to be, it's going to possibly open doors. And so I don't necessarily see it as a bad thing. I just think that it's, it's kind of evidence of how much things are changing and how fast they're changing.
And if I could add a comment on, to that, what we're looking at, at the board level is not just positions here in Nevada, but being able to go to Texas or California or some other state and actually compete for positions at a, better than a, a starting rate. Working for Amazon, working for Hewlett Packard as a, a computer tech, you know, something, you know, maybe they, maybe some of our students will like to, to expand their horizons.
Do we have, we spend every evening on the board listening to presentations about data and we have lots of data. We have servers holding all this data. Do we have any qualitative data that, especially when we talk about other states, that this type of adjustment to our diplomas is going to do, in fact, what we're talking about? Is it going to open up these doors or is this more, I mean, is it quantitative or is it, is it just kind of, well, it makes sense?
Actually, it's a combination of quantitative and qualitative, especially as I mentioned again, towards gaining these certifications. Many areas of labor require these certifications to be able to get a position. And if you have that when you graduated from high school rather than obtaining it a year or two into your community college time, it puts you that much more ahead. And these, as these were being developed by the Department of Ed and presented to us, they did do a significant amount of, of research in touching not all 50 states, but a majority of them, as well as the various accrediting organizations for the various certifications.
And that's the only reason I brought it up is I was kind of curious how far-reaching our data is because I, I understand trustee Green's comment and trustee Walker's comment. And I think it's, you know, it's good dialogue. There's some, there's some industries that, you're right, you just, they just really want a pulse and somebody willing to work. And there's others that are like, hey, these certificates are important, they mean something. And so that's where I'm going is, you know, have we spoken to other states? Have we talked into the Teslas and the, and whatever they all call themselves now, all these different companies to say, hey, does this, you know, we're about to go through a pretty, on paper, significant change. What kind of bang for a buck are we going to get for this? Again, for our students. And so that's where I'm coming from is if it's a benefit for our students, you know, I'm okay with this. But I do, would like to see some quantitative data that says, you know, yes, here's who we've spoken to, here's, here's where we're at and why we're going down this path.
Well, and it lends to the direction, both directly and indirectly from the legislature this last session in 2017. To change the subject a little bit, that's one of the reasons why with the read by three program, now the T, the one test is a K1 test and then you have the two five test because the, even though it's harder initially for those second graders, they're going to have to reach a level by the time they get the third grade. And so the, the legislature mandated us to be, make regulations that would enhance that. And in the same, in the same vein, we have received our marching orders from the legislature to improve our academic standing and increase from right now in 2015 rated 51 out of 51.
Just going back to thinking about our, our presentations with our previous principals, I think of a couple of things. I think of Mr. Zona who mentioned how the very first year he gave the ACT to the students, they walked, some of them walked out, they couldn't, didn't understand the value of that. They weren't able to communicate the value of the ACT and now they've come a long way. Yet, and yet, and that is still a junior requirement of all students for the state. But going back to what trustee Green was talking about is going out into life and having what you did in high school matter. And for that school, Mr. Zona would ask, why wouldn't the ASVAB count for something? Why wouldn't industry certifications count for something for welding or, or food handlers or, or medical? Why wouldn't they, why wouldn't that be of value? And one thing, I wasn't privy to all those committee meetings, so that's why Mr. Carter's here for that background knowledge. But it made me think about, even though, yes, there is work, it made me think about this, this diploma options that if business and industry are, are going to accept things that are national certifications from our students, then Michelle Lewis is happy because then when her students walk out with those completer courses under their belt, it's not just this kid took welding at Carson High School. It was this child took welding at Carson High School and earned this industry certification. And even if they do start at the beginning, they might be able to move up the ladder quicker because of the skill set that they brought to the table. So that was just something that, that I was thinking about in relation to our district and our students and our people who work with trying to get their message across that our students are getting a high-quality education. And if business and industry and the higher ed has said, we will accept this and our, we can show that our students can get to this, then they should be able to have a leg up over the other students who don't get to that point.
I'm just looking at our diploma options at Carson High and it seems to me that the standard diploma is similar to the standard diploma. It's got some more rigor. And then this college and career ready proposal is basically combining the advanced diploma with the CTE diploma. To me, it's the name, college and career ready, that it seems like a standard diploma should, that's the goal is to have every kid graduate college or career ready. So that to me seems like that's the baseline. So I kind of liked the idea of having it be an advanced diploma that, yes, this, they're not just college and career ready, but they're advanced. They've met certifications, national certifications. They've met higher coursework. And, and so to me, college and career ready actually seems to lower what the diploma is from hearing it called an advanced diploma. And then I guess my other question is, is Carson High still going to offer an honors diploma?
So when we met, Mr. Stokes was part of that committee too, we were talking about, and they were doing a comparison of the courses. So the state doesn't recognize the honors diploma, that's a Carsonism, you know, and Douglasism, you know, if you would go with that terminology. But what we, the initial proposal on the table was, yes, that terminology. But what we, the initial proposal on the table was, yes, we would, we would, taking consideration on March, in March, what the state board does with the standard diploma, and then come back and compare it to our standard diploma. And then because this has already been passed by the state board, the advanced diploma, now college and career ready diploma, has been passed, the team decided that they, we would need the advanced honors or CTE diploma, because it's all in here. It would be the standard and the college and career ready diploma with the endorsements, and then the adult ed diploma. So I believe that's going to be the proposal we bring back to you in March.
So honors diplomas will go away after 2023 or so?
Yeah.
Okay.
And by the way, regarding the years, regarding the years, there was an comment made by one of the board members, that we do move to 2023. It wasn't moved on, because the standard diploma wasn't accepted in full at that point. But in March, it will be adopted as 2023, recognizing that it was going to take some time for the various schools, high schools to implement the changes.
There's funding also behind the changes to this, and for districts to make the transition. So what we would be looking at probably is if there's any costs as far as communication, revising materials, and probably hiring a programmer to work with our infinite campus system, so that we're not putting stickers on diplomas the day before graduation. So that it's all in the IC system when it prints out on the transcript. So this is, like I said, this was an informational, just an opener, there'll be more discussions on the process regarding the both diplomas. And you know that the standard diploma is in process for board, state board approval in March. The college and career ready diploma for advanced is replacing the advanced diploma, and that's been approved by the state board already.
So, so just so I'm clear, so this is going to be statewide, this isn't?
Correct.
This isn't something Carson City is going to have, that other districts in our state aren't going to have?
Correct. That's why Mr. Carter's.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. Yeah.
Because there's the other districts that don't have the, the curriculum, the rigor that we've had for years now. So everybody's catching up to us now.
Nobody was freaking out around the table. It's just knowing that we've got some work in, as far as communication and, and modification of our, our course catalogs.
Can you just sum this up, going back to, with trustee Green, keeping it simple, why don't we just have the high school diploma and do what we've done in the past? We write a resume to go along with this, to tell employers what we've done and what we've done. Okay, that's, but now, we're going to, like Mike Walker says, change this in a way that we're talking a different language at a different level for business and industry. However, I still believe that they'll want a resume of who we are. So, I, I don't know. Just keep moving. So, all right. Thank you for the information.
And then just a comment, since we have Mr. Carter here, I hope you heard Tasha talk about, we kind of want to find out why we're not following some of those other dist, or other states where they're doing the, the K through 12 ACT, ACT alignment. So maybe you can look into that and get back to us.
Well, I could tell you one thing, when I was in high school, many, 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 many years ago, the SAT was IP. ACT was not considered anything. Now, the ACT is the standard. And for, and is the standard for more of the universities throughout the nation. And so that is one of the reasons. And I believe part of the changes here, in more detail, rather than what we at a board level are, are expecting, will increase what the state has used to meet the ACT. And so the requirements, I'm, I believe, as the administrative regs go out, will help us be more in line with the national ACT. And I think that's all part of this too, but not at the level that we would adopt.
Okay, going on to, if there's no further questions from anyone, audience, let's go on to agenda item number 11, that's discussion and possible action to approve proposed Carson City School District Academic Calendar for the 2018-19 school year. Susan, you're on again.
Susan Kima, for the record, it is my pleasure to provide you with the proposed 2018-2019 calendar for the Carson City School District. You will see that in many ways, the calendar is similar to this year's calendar. The start date is, for students, would be August 20th, and the last day, August 20th, 2018. And the last day of school would be June 5th, 2019. I thought what I would do is go through the calendar, I'll address professional development days and early release days after I go through the calendar and talk about some of the holidays.
So, and just when you talk about that, I'm just curious about, it seems really heavy the first two months. And so when you talk about those, I'd appreciate just what you're going to do in the beginning of the year. Okay?
All right. So, as I said, we just will start school on August 20th. Data shows with our new hire training, under that, the week of August 6th, there's training beforehand as always. The week of August 6th would be new hire training, so that's new teachers. The data supports the fact that they like being together, they, they bond as a new hire group. It's really important that they bond, they bond with us, they bond with each other, because it's not, we're not just in the business of recruiting anymore, we need to keep them. Especially if you have certain type of credentials, you could go anywhere. And so we want to make sure we retain our folks. They like the idea, and the data showed that they like the idea, idea of having time off before they started back again after their training. So that's why that's set up there, and then the two days off. Teacher training would be, one day is for the district, one day is for the site, and then Friday is for teachers to be in their classroom, setting up. And then we start school on the 20th. So then, of course, we have Labor Day in September, and then October, one of the feed, the feedback that I received this year was that for Read by Three in the elementary, they wanted the first quarter to be longer than the second quarter. Our, our semester ends at Christmas, but they want it first quarter to be longer. And so what we did was, is we made it a week longer, which then it ends on October 19th, which then I surveyed the principals, and they were, they were fine with having parent conferences, instead of the week of Nevada Day, the week after Nevada Day, on the 31st, the 1st, and the 2nd. So that would give the teachers the same exact amount of time from when the quarter ends to get the, getting their grades into infinite campus for their report cards. So we pushed that out. Also, but backed by popular, popular demand, is that third day in November for Thanksgiving. People seem to let us know that they're very happy when they have that day in the calendar for family time, for travel. December, the Christmas winter break is two weeks, the same as this year, minus one day, because Christmas has moved a little bit further into the week. I didn't feel it was necessary to take that Friday off. Something that I would like you to take a look at is that January 7th, when we come back, and then Easter is April 21st, it's late. That is a long time for our staff, our students, and the wear and tear on our billings. So what we've done is put a few breaks in there. So of course, is Martin Luther King Day in January is a given. This year, we added a day attached to President's Day weekend, so next year we're doing it too. So, you know, it hasn't happened yet to see what people think about that mini break, but we're going to give a couple of mini breaks in order to get people to spring break. So we added a day on top of the, attached to the President's Day weekend, and, and give it a four-day weekend. I think people can actually get done with their normal weekend things. And if they wanted to take a little mini trip out of town, they could, or if they wanted just to have extra time with their family. And then we did it again in March, the 15th and 18th. Those are non, those three days are non-professional development days, they're just non-school days. Our year-round staff would still be in session, and that would give our custodians, and when you think about this year's cold and flu season, it would give our custodians a chance to kind of get in, get in and do some things extra in their sites. Spring break is attached to Easter. Last time, spring break, or Easter was late, and I put spring break in March, we heard about it, and went back this past year to having spring break around Easter. We received calls. Spring break was in March, we wanted to cut a breakup, that long run from January to, to Easter. But we put it back, we, we are keeping it on, on Easter, because that's been where the feedback was from our constituents. The last day of school then would be, month, May is a heavy testing month, and then the last day of school would be June 5th, with of course, some snow days attached to that. That would be June 6th, 7th, and 10th, if we would need them. So those are, those are some holidays and some mini breaks. Going back to the, are there any questions before I go to the early release days or professional?
I just have one. So, you know, we'll get the, you know, the spring break, but when are the SBACs?
The SBAC would be in May. We, we had been taking them in April, but the test coordinators, we talked about, we can take that in May. So we've got April as instructional time.
I mean, if we take a spring break, and then we come back and immediately take SBACs?
So we, we take spring break, and then we have like a week or so, two weeks of prep, and then we, then we go for it. Usually has to be done by May 24th.
And I like your idea of the extended weekends. I think that's good for students and teachers. So we're asking a lot of everybody, and that gives a little bit of time to relax and get your brain out of things for a little bit, you know?
Well, and it gets intense. I mean, the, you know, that time right before you have a break, if it's a long one, the lines for discipline, people find reasons to be not at work. People say, and do things that they wouldn't do if they had just a moment to just, you know, think about it. But I, I also was thinking about, you know, this year's flu season, having a couple of days in there, in the middle of that time, for the custodians to have a chance to get in there and do some extra things for the safety of our students. I thought that might be a benefit. Also-
Mrs. Kima, can I interrupt there for a second? In HR, we call March, March Madness, like everybody else. And April is April Anarchy. And then May is May Mayhem. So I totally agree that staff and students need to kind of have a little chill time.
It was, you know, when you looked at our new hires even, and when they came back after having that Nevada Day weekend, there was just a middle, a little bit of a, you know, they had a moment to kind of catch up, because many of them aren't, aren't too far behind the, you know, ahead of the kids on that first year. So, so early release days, or, let's talk about professional development days first. Last year's calendar, of course, has training before the students come. But let's talk about the training that happens after students arrive. Last, this current year's calendar, we have five professional development days after the students arrived. So next year, I have three. It's a reduction of two. So when you think about that, you could get about three early release days out of a professional development day. And when we're looking at those early release days, the professional development day, there's one strategically put in October, because by then, we should be done with our testing for Read by Three, and that can give teachers some time to work on those ILPs for the students that need some extra support. The second, the second professional development day is February 4th, and that will be our student-led conferences at the middle school, among other training to be determined, but that's a big day for the middle school. And then our third one will be April 8th, which will be senior projects at the high school. And for this year's calendar, we put that all on here, and of course, everybody's graduation date. District professional, or the full day professional development days are usually designated for district initiatives. Now that we've got our learner-centered model, you know, always needing refinement, but a majority of it is in place, it's time for the sites to have more time with their people. And frankly, through this year, the administrators were letting me know that the time constraints of being able to meet the accountability requirements per NRS, and their school improvement planning, was diminished by having less early release time. Plus, administrators let me know that early release time, which is supposed to be site time, this year wasn't always site time. Because, and I'll, and I'll lay it right here on the table, with textbook adoption, some of, sometimes those content areas needed to get together to look at their materials. But then Tasha, let's say, was missing her English department, or she was missing her math department in something that she wanted to do school-wide. I'm using that as an example. The board had given extra days to our two-star schools for improvement purposes. Surrounding districts have weekly collaboration. And in the past, the issue was, when are we having it? Is, is it, you know, when you try to do something like every other week, you can't quite remember if you're supposed to be doing it or not. And so we would get calls. So that's why, heavy, it's heavy in September. Mike, Mr. Walker? It is heavy in September, because, because we don't put an early release day or professional development day on a week that there's a holiday. And we don't, I try not to put it right before a big holiday. And so, yes, there's quite a few in September, but there's a lot of startup things that need to go on. And now we've got a full-fledged safety department running, and they want to make sure that we've got our safety pieces covered, so I can see some management regarding safety and, and all of that taken care of, revisiting their data with their school improvement plan, and even maybe some time for the teachers to work on those ILPs.
So, and I think all of that sounds great. And I think, one of the thoughts I have is, with that many early release days, right in the beginning of the school year, one of the things that, I don't know about everybody else, but I always hear from people, is we need more time to set up in the beginning of the year from teachers.
Yeah.
And so maybe in the beginning of the year, it's kind of a site day, and teachers have two workdays, and maybe the district initiative could roll out in one of those early release days, or two of those. I'm just thinking if there's a way to give teachers that extra time to get set up, so they're not coming in in July and June. And, I mean, we know what happens, so.
And Sue, this was, put it on our website, I mean, it's-
Yes.
For possible action, what concerns did you receive?
I only received one email from a concerned citizen, and I responded to him, and he had not responded back. And, and Mrs. Cortez said, nobody else has, has called or sent any emails unless they've sent them to you.
Well, I, I put it on my Facebook page, which I'm not sure if that was a good idea or not. But I had some comments, a lot of questions, the usual, why don't we start after Labor Day? Because everybody wants to start later. Some of the other questions were, what was the March break for? And I didn't know until now. And then, some of the questions are also, have we considered doing a late start, rather than an early release? And I'm not sure if you've, I, I know that some of the other schools do that, and I don't, or districts do that. I don't know if that's anything that we've considered. I think I remember when they did a late start for testing at the high school, I remember Tasha saying that they had more tardies and more absences that day with the late start. So I don't know if that would be one of the reasons that, that we don't do that. And then I guess, one of the other concerns that was brought up was the, the days, the number of days after high, after school ends before high school graduation. But I believe, don't we put those in there, so that in case we have a snow day, we have a day to make up?
We, we do. We do and the high school, two days is best for them to get prepared for that graduation. One day they can do it, but two days is best.
And then I guess, one of the other questions, other questions that I do have is that in December, I think I remember that last day in December being a minimum day and this year it looks like it's an early release day.
It was an early release day this year.
Oh, it wasn't a minimum, maybe I was just getting ready for them to come home.
We're trying to feed our, more of our students.
Okay. And then the last day of school will still be a minimum day?
Yes.
Okay. Because that was, Mr. Sadler had a question about that because he thought it was an early release day yesterday and that would affect when they do promotions and everything.
So, in my feedback session with the principals, that was, I don't, I don't know where, where I missed that, but I had those, the last two days as early release days to try to calm the calendar down to just keep either an early release time or a regular time for the parent. But I realized that our, it does, as Mr. Sadler pointed out, to affect when we start graduations, promotions for middle school those last two days. So, we're back to that at the end.
And then I guess, because I'm seeing the light blue, so the October 1st day, the holidays and non-school days, but how are the teachers going to know which days are not holidays and which days are P-days or PD days? Because light blue looks like a non-school day holiday. So, I, I guess, how, how do we make those three professional development days easy for, yeah?
And you know, this is the traditional look of our calendar and there has been comments this year about maybe looking at a calendar where there are symbols for people who might be colorblind, you know, but, but what you're approving is the information, maybe not the format.
I, I just, because that was one of the questions from a teacher was, where are the professional development days? And so...
We put them all under non-school days, all under one category, school holidays and non-school days. And we put Labor Day, Staff Professional Development, Nevada Day, Thanksgiving, Winter Break, Staff Professional, and then we put a non-school day. But because some people think that, 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 that mini break in March is attached to St. Patty's Day. I just don't want people to think that that, we're always going to take St. Pat, Patrick's Day off.
Mr. Wallace, any concerns on?
Nothing that hasn't already been addressed. Brian Wallace, OCA President. Nothing that hasn't already been addressed, Mr. President. One of the reasons OCA passed off, a lot of this was responsibility is so Mrs. Kima could work around testing dates from the state because there for a while, they were just kind of a floating target and OCA would set vacation dates. And then we put the district in a difficult position because we already had those set and ratified through our position. Ever since we've passed that off almost three years ago, the calendar has smoothed itself out and Mrs. Kima and staff have done a great job in listening to the feedback, especially on seeing pieces like the March. So, to give consideration that it's a long stretch. When we used to set those dates, people always wanted it around Easter. We knew it was a long stretch, but it was the will of the membership and now we just have a much better partnership rolling with this. And the start dates are the start dates. We heard the same items all the time, Ms. Crossman, about why aren't we doing after Labor Day? And as we all know, we have high school sports to deal with, we have middle school sports to deal with and all those other little components people forget about as we roll forward with it. And the June 5th end date, I know works well for Carson High, graduations, middle school promotions and et cetera. So, this looks great from our end and kudos, especially on the March component.
I wanted to say thank you. I think like Mr. Wallace said, to the, this to me is real evidence of effective communication throughout the organization from my time on this board and what this has gone to. I think it's a real demonstration of, of listening and receiving and putting together something that is workable for all, everybody involved. So, thank you.
And it helps too that when we have these discussions, I go back and put my bullet points. So, this is my brain, the next year I come, so I don't have to reinvent the thinking every time.
I just have a question because I know that there are other districts who have an early release day every week. Is that something that we would potentially look into if, if it's needed? Just so that then in October, you're not going to start getting the phone calls of, tomorrow's an early release? You know, just so everybody knows and can schedule regular appointments or regular after-school activities if they knew if that's something that's needed. I, I don't know. I've kind of asked a few parents. Some of them said, yeah, make it every Friday. But others are kind of open to other, other things on that and just if, I think if we can explain to parents if it, if it is something that we need to do, just to have that consistency possibly there.
Okay. Thank you. I also want to point out that we, this is the first time we put the first day for pre-K and the last day for pre-K on, on the schedule too. We have those start dates already there. And, and just for your information, Washoe's going to start August 6th. Douglas is going to start on the 13th. We're starting on the 20th and Lang County will start on the 27th, I believe. So, that's where we're, what it looks like in the region. And then, of course, Mr. Blair Roman has to figure out this football thing with everybody on different schedules.
So, Sue, we had talked about this, we'd also, we've had a lot of feedback from teachers throughout this year because of the Read-By-Three and the extra work that it's done. Are any of these, have you discussed with the principals of any of these early release days can just be for teachers to have an hour and a half to, to do what they have to do?
So, with, with the additional, if you should, should you approve this calendar as is with the extra early release days? I do want to meet with the administrators so that they can give me a plan with that and we can have a discussion. But heavy, heavy September, October time, there's a lot for them to get going with school improvement planning, but though, there should be some time in there for Read-By-Three, especially for them to even look at their site data and then maybe give them some work time.
So, Mia, when we're looking at maybe what Mrs. Crossman brought up, where if we had it on a certain, every day where they got out an hour early, maybe we can look at that aspect where people can work on their own little projects instead of site or district priorities.
Well, the goal next year as, you know, is to keep refining the Read-By-Three, that needs to be at the site now. The, the district pieces for next year besides would be the textbook adoptions that we've gone through is making sure that those content areas understand how to use their materials. Otherwise, we're pretty much now back to being site-based and just refining that. And I always say that and something comes up and the people behind me know that, but we try our best.
Okay. This is an action item. Go, Joe.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the 2018-2019 academic calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay.
There's no way I'm keeping up with this.
Okay. Harry Nun, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12, presentation by the superintendent on the state of the district, informational overview of the Carson City School District for the 2016-17 school year. Richard.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, realizing that I am standing between you and your pillow. I'll, I'll go through my first 12 slides while we're waiting for these folks to come, no, just teasing. I do, I am happy though to be in front of you and appreciate this opportunity to give you a, a reckoning of things that have happened this past school year. A lot of my presentation is what you are used to seeing and so, I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time except on some of the specifics that I, I think might be salient. In, specifically on this particular slide, we had a little higher-than-typical student enrollment this year. We're still trying to understand exactly what happened. In our most recent student count, it appears that we've lost about 40 students from count day. So, we're, we're not growing this time of year, which is pretty typical. We typically don't see new students coming this time of year, but it also doesn't indicate that there's maybe the large growth that maybe was indicative of this early number. So, just something to, to consider. Really, our ethnicity and special programs have not changed appreciably over the years. You'll see that we're still, especially with regard to our special programs, we're inching up a little bit in our IEP group. Our LEP is staying about the same in our FRL, about one out of every two students. I thought you'd like to see this comparison and this is current statistics with regard to our special programs compared against Clark, Washoe, and Douglas. Any thoughts on that one?
Could you send us this tonight, please?
Sure. I promise, Mr. Swerzick, this time I will not fail. I'll, I'll make sure that I get this out to everyone.
Mr. Stokes, one of the things I think that, just with that slide before, you know, we hear so much about the poverty rates in Washoe County, Clark County. I mean, and the fact that our FRL number is, you know, a higher percentage than Washoe County's, I think it just kind of shows the, the population we deal with and the struggles that our schools are really facing. And that, with that number comes a great need.
Agreed. This slide shows a comparison of last year's employee numbers against this year's. You'll see in particular that our certified staff number is relatively higher. I think that we were fortunate this year, great job by our HR department in filling some positions that were vacant last year. And of course, there are also specialized programs that are categorical that we've been able to take advantage of this year as well. You'll also see in our classified staff where we have our 10 and 11-month employees, that is also indicative of the additional paraprofessionals that we've added in the past year. So, significant increase in the number of employees and we're in a people business and it takes a lot of people to, to do this important work. Transient C, you know, if you look at 13 through 16 for our district, we, we were relatively stable. There seems to have been though in 2017, an uptick for district transient C and a slight greater than in the past years of the state, a downtick. So, I, I can't quite put my finger on why that occurred. But transient C is typically defined as a student who starts within our school district and then moves out or moves to another school within our school district. And so, it's just an idea of how often students move in and out of our school district. Average daily attendance for students, you'll know that Carson City School District has implemented a SARB program. We've hired a truancy officer. We're trying a number of things to try to improve the chronic absence rate in our school district. Not too long ago in the newspaper, we had Carson Middle School that did an effort to try and improve attendance at their school, trying to impress upon students and the parents the importance of attending school. So, still have a little work to do there. And one of the components of our STAR ranking system is chronic absenteeism. And so, principals I know are anxious to try to, to improve this number.
Yep.
Sorry. So, just on that, I mean, I look at our district from 2013 and we're, you know, we haven't deviated. We're steady as she goes. So, despite whatever we're doing, we're, we're maintaining, you know, it's steady. I'm just wondering why the state, any reason, have you heard any reports on why they improved over the last year?
I have not. So, I don't have any good data unless you guys have anything to add that you might know of. But yes, the state's numbers have increased.
I just think statewide efforts to try to meet NSPF results and now people know what that target is and that's 18 days, 10% of your school year. The people know what the target is and they're trying to hit that with all kinds of initiatives.
Do you have any preliminary data? I mean, I know that we have the SARB committee, you have, on the news last, a couple of weeks ago, I saw somebody was out there waving to the kids, was it a counselor or somebody? You know what I mean, at Carson Middle School? So, I mean, do we have any kind of data that's showing that those efforts, I mean, are we still kind of in the same range or are we seeing any kind of spike or?
Well, and this year's really the first year that we've understood what the attendance conditions do for that STAR ranking. And so, I would assume that we'll see additional efforts by the schools to try to increase that number. And this is a statistic that shows the average daily attendance of our teachers. Graduation rates, I've tried to go back at least five years. I'm really, really happy and believe that this is an opportunity for some celebration. I've also tried to include my goal here that we set last May and we have achieved our goal, but graduation rate's a little bit like milking cows. You still got to get up in the morning and do it again, no matter how well you did it the night before. So, we definitely have our eyes set on a higher prize and with the, the good work that's being done in our schools, we believe that's obtainable. I know that you have heard several presentations on average ACT scores and this is again, the same numbers that you have seen from Mrs. Fuson. Just wanted to put it out there that we do have as a district goal that we are expecting to increase that composite in our school district to a 19. And that's, that's a lofty goal, but we will see and measure those conditions that have been, been put into place and work towards that end. This is a, a slide that you've seen in years past and it shows that we're still, since 2011, 2012, in a positive light. Just because we're in a positive light, it still doesn't necessarily mean that we have enough to do the work that we think yet needs to be done. So, I know that Mr. Feeling and myself are working with our colleagues across the state to get ready for the next legislative session in 2019 to question the funding mechanism that's in the state of Nevada and of course, work towards a, a higher number that we believe will provide more people and do the work in education that, that we believe is, is out there for us to do.
Mr. Stokes, if you don't mind, going back to that last slide, I want to just mention there's a correlation in any educational leadership study or any school finance study that the correlation of student achievement with your basic per pupil support is definitely tied together. So, as we are looking at the 51st place in, in the country in Nevada, I would dare to say that if you look at the number one state, typically it's in the northeast, somewhere in Massachusetts area, it's 20, 25,000 per, per head, per student. So, and they're getting a lot of support that our students are not getting. So, I've been saying this for years, what we do in Nevada for the little amount of money that we receive from the DSA is a miracle.
Does that number include categorical funding that we've got or is that just the basic?
This is DSA numbers. Yep. Okay. These are also slides that I've just advanced by a year and so, you... And so you've seen these before. But this compares us to other school districts across the state. And again, you can see that the, the budgeting has been pretty consistent over time. And instruction represents the dollar amounts that we expend for our certified staff and, and benefits. And then we also have another measure that shows instructional support. And this would be the non-classified, or the non-certified teachers, including classified. And you can see that our school district has consistently, over time, shown an increase for expenditures in this particular area. And I attribute that to the staffing that we have at our kindergartens and our preschools. And, and of course, that is, is shown in these numbers. Operations, we have consistently been slightly below the state average. And of course, some of this can be attributed to the good work that's done with our operations department, the building, the construction and use of our solar arrays, and all the good green things that are done by Mr. Cornick and his staff. And leadership, we've traditionally always been lower than the state average by a considerable amount. And it's, it's good for you folks to keep in mind these numbers simply because as we come into budgeting season, as we make decisions about staffing and about leadership and proposed programs or personnel changes, hopefully this gives you an idea of where we are spending our money and how. And then as we kind of near the end here, of course, we are fortunate in our school district to have a strong strategic plan. Every building that I go through, every discussion I have with individual staff, the, the strategic plan is mentioned and respected and appreciated because of the fact we do have some specific goals that we're trying to meet. And it really does help us in our decision-making. And so I'm appreciative of the board and the support that you, and the direction that you guys have given to us as a school district. This is the same slide as our last meeting, or not our last meeting, but the last time I made this presentation, simply because while we have moved closer to this, and this is still the work that we have on our plates, we have completed a majority of the energy performance projects that have been accomplished. However, there is some retrofitting that has needed to take place in our schools at Mark Twain and at Fremont. We had some of the heat pumps that were installed new fail. And that has been traced back to faulty equipment from the manufacturer. McKinstry, who has been our partner through this energy service update, has been very proactive. They want business with other schools, and they want their relationship with us to be pristine. So however it had that, those failures have caused some difficulties and some challenges in our individual schools, but they are being resolved. And I just want you folks to know that. And still getting great support from our bond oversight committee. And you're seeing there the projects that we're working towards completing. And as we look to the future, obviously, we are intending to maintain fidelity to our strategic plan. We're going to have continued focus on academic rigor. We know that there'll be ongoing support with materials, training, and time. And as in the past year, even though sometimes it may not look like it, you, you saw the work that's being done that Mrs. Kima presented with regard to our, our new diplomas. But we really are, from the school district's perspective, limiting new initiatives. Our teachers have enough on their plates. They're, they're needing that time to plan, to get that training, to fine tune the materials that they've received, and the time really to, to interact with other staff members. So truly are making an effort to limit any new initiatives. And of course, as we go through this, we'll be considering what it's all going to cost, how we can keep the good programs and people that we have in place in light of changes that are always seem to happening in our industry. And we also know that as capital projects are built, there will be other needs, especially as the community grows, which will also include not only new projects for construction, but also the strong likelihood of rezoning our community. So I'm going to quit there and offer myself or my staff for any questions that you might have regarding this basic look at our school district. And also invite you for the coming year to share with me your ideas as to how I can improve this presentation or make it more informative for you.
Comments, questions from the board?
I just want to say, because last year I felt like I was a broken record talking about getting teachers in those classrooms. And the effort that you guys have put towards that is evident. And so I want to say thank you for that because, you know, these kids need teachers. And so, and I know that you understand that and believe the same thing. I'm just saying that that effort has paid off. And luckily, we've been able to find some qualified people to put in these classrooms. So I think that's great news.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And we hope that we're able to have a successful hiring season yet again this next year.
Well, Richard, thank you, and you will send that out to us. Thank you. We'll probably have some follow-up questions. Okay. Moving forward to the approval of the consent agenda, as agenda item number 13.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. We're on to agenda item number 14, informational items for discussion only. Any questions, concerns on the informational items? Seeing none. We'll go to agenda item number 15, request for future agenda items. Topics?
Too tired.
Beat us down.
Okay, let me just say, you know, the ones that you put on, you know, for the workshops, for the, that you requested for the, the other elementaries, all that's in the work. And so that'll, Richard will, next time we'll have that laid out so that everything's being scheduled. Item 16, if there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned.